Being six oh one on Monday, May the seventh, two thousand and eighteen, we'll call the order. City meetings this evening. First up tonight, we have a liquor control board meeting, which we have slated for six P M. We've got one item on there, should be fairly quick, and then we'll transition over at six oh five and start the city council meeting. And for folks who are here for the purposes of tonight's public hearing, which will be the Main Street revitalization vote, we're going to start the public, our general public meeting for city council, go through as many items we can get through before six thirty, and then we'll transition into that public hearing, where we'll go through some of the project details, open it up for question and answer, if there's that interest as well. So that's what tonight's slate looks like. So first up tonight, we'll open with the liquor control board. I'll ask everyone, please stand and join us for the pleasure of allegiance, led by Deputy Mayor Nicole Mace.
(inaudible) the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we've got one item on tonight's agenda for the liquor control board. We have Big Red Presents, which is LLC of DBA, or doing business as Misery Loves Company, Lake Champlain International, it's spelled wrong, it's Chowder Fest, and fundraiser, May twenty-six, two thousand and eighteen.
So this is an event that will take place on the twenty-sixth in the Rotary Park. It's gone through the event permitting process, but they are looking for their catering permit to support the Chowder Fest in Rotary Park. No concerns? Does this event happen before? Or is this a new event? It's a new event. It didn't come to you because it doesn't require... Did it come to me?
No, it doesn't have any street closures, and it's under two hundred.
Hmm, yeah. So the concept, it's a water lake cleanup organization, so they source the fish from the lake, and then they have a Chowder Festival competition. So they are recruiting entrants. If you are a Chowder chef and want to participate, contact Misery Loves Company.
That's worth mentioning, just to take the opportunity to do another business. I'm pretty sure our house is international Chowder fame of sorts. They've won several national or regional competitions with their Chowder, so excuse to go down, eat delicious Chowder. Any questions, concerns from the liquor control board? Any questions or concerns from the public? So seeing and hearing none, I entertain a motion for our application this evening on the liquor control.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Christine, second by Hal. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion carries, event is approved. That completes tonight's liquor control board slate of items. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Eric, second by Nicole. Further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion carries, liquor control board meeting is hereby adjourned. We'll start the city council meeting in about a minute. Okay, so being six oh five on Monday, May seventh, we'll call order the regular city council meeting. Ask everybody again, please join us for the pleasure of allegiance, led by Deputy Mayor Nicole Mace.
(inaudible) the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so up first tonight, we have our agenda review. This is an opportunity for a council review of agenda and make any adjustments. It might be warranted at this time. I think we stacked things up pretty, in a way that made sense of the public hearing in the middle. Any questions, concerns about the agenda? Good, so seeing and hearing none, we'll move forward with the agenda as presented and open up for public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to adjust counsel about items that are not on tonight's agenda. You can find the agenda in the back, and we also would appreciate if everybody would remember to sign in in the back sheet too, before leaving this evening, if you haven't done so already. Thanks for doing that. We're going to adjust counsel on an item that's not on tonight's agenda. Okay, so seeing and hearing none, we will move on to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda tonight consists of approval of the city council liquor control minutes from April sixteenth, warrants from five four and four eight to four twenty-one, and subsequent payouts for March. We also have the International City Managers Association Retirement Cooperation Agreement, Corporation Agreement, good grief, adding extra O's and R's, and also approval of the V-Trans Annual Certification for Compliance for Town Roads, Bridge Standards, and Network Inventory, and also the V-Trans Annual Financial Plan for Highways. Any questions or concerns in regards to the consent agenda? Any questions or concerns from the public? Good, so seeing and hearing none, I entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Nicole, second by Christine. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion carries. City updates.
Great, thank you. So a couple of updates tonight. First, on some program updates, wanted to let you know that Ray and I met with representatives from the pool, the fundraising pool committee last week. They have met and started their work about developing a fundraising plan, setting some fundraising targets, and were looking for more information from us, which was really helpful and useful. They're meeting again on Wednesday evening here, if people are interested. So at your next meeting, on the twenty-first, we will be bringing to you the follow-up information that you requested when it was last on your agenda, which was some cost analysis on those necessary items from the pool and the add-on items. That information has also been shared with the fundraising committee, a timeline to get to an August bond vote, and some more information about other community services programming. So that will be coming to you on the twenty-first. We're really going to try, because the pool committee is meeting this week, we're going to get their feedback after their meeting and send you that memo either the end of this week or the very beginning of next week, so you'll have it a week out from the twenty-first meeting. We've been talking about the master plan process, as we're in the, have a staffing vacancy with our planning and zoning manager. We are finalizing an agreement with CCRPC for them to come and help facilitate that project through the adoption of a new master plan, hopefully in the winter or early spring next year. They've agreed to it. We have got, we have authorization from the state to use the municipal planning grant we secured last year to fund that work. So it's no new money, but it's facilitation help that will ensure that that project continues on even during the staffing vacancy. I also wanted to let you know that we have, about five months ago, we stood up a safety committee with representatives from all of our unions and management to have the people doing the work really inform us about areas where they felt we could make safety improvements, training opportunities, equipment, et cetera. It's been functioning really well. Kudos to John Choate, who's the chair of the committee, and Julie, who staffs that. So since that's been stood up, we've held work strong training for all of our staff, which is training that's run through Vermont League of Cities and Towns, back injury prevention for the public works team and the fire department, again, prevention to try and ensure that they're healthy and safe and not, and that we're not experiencing claims, ergo evaluations for employees who are more sedentary in their work, FIGA training, and now we're starting to focus on mental health training for our first responders. So it's a really great effort and ideas that are, again, coming from our team, which I think are really exciting. One more project update. Last meeting, I talked to you about the two sixty-eight East Allen project getting their low-income housing tax credits. So that project is moving along fairly quickly. They hope to start construction late summer. It will require the closure of one lane of East Allen Street during construction, because they're built with the Form-based code, they're building right up to the sidewalk there. So John Rousher and their traffic engineers are working on a plan to accommodate that during construction, since it's right, you know, uphill from the hood intersection. It's a, it's kind of a complicated lane closure, but I want you to know it's coming, and we'll provide that, that traffic plan once it's finalized with the engineers. Events. This weekend was really fun. So two updates. Green update was a huge success. We filled up an entire dumpster with our friends and neighbors cleaning up the city. Ray says it's the most he's experienced since he's been here, which is awesome, and thank you to everyone who came out and participated in that. Waking Windows from the city's perspective also was a huge success. Wanted to thank the organizers for putting together such a well-run event, and of course, our public safety crews, who were on duty most of the weekend supporting that event. Just while we're on events, May nineteenth, we have three other fun events in the city. It's not this Saturday, but the following. We have the Whiffle Classic at Cassavant, which will be all day. We have the Public Heroes Day on Winuski Falls Way with our public safety teams. Howard Mental Health is going to come out and have a setup, and some of the other public safety providers in the region, so that's usually a fun day for families. And then there'll be the plant swap that morning at Richards Park as well. And then finally, since our last meeting, CCRPC hosted the Housing Commission convening, what they called it, on April thirtieth at the OCC, had representatives from, I think, all but two Chittenden County communities, talking about what they're doing to promote affordable housing development. Really interesting conversations, and coming out of that, CCRPC agreed to host a series of more targeted conversations about specific tools that have been used across the region, so affordable housing trust funds, task forces, inclusionary zoning, other policy initiatives. So we will continue to keep you all in the Housing Commission informed as those are scheduled. That's all I have. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. I'll turn it over now to council reports.
I can't remember which one you said last time.
I think it's me. So I attended the Community Service Commission meeting on April twenty-fifth as the council liaison. Conversation about the pool was a, was a big conversation. The concern of the commission is that we don't scale it back to the extent that it really doesn't satisfy the, the needs of the community. So, but hearing how the Development Committee, Fundraising Committee is getting up and running, that was an important part of, you know, the plan, of how do we fund the project with some support from fundraising. There was conversation about the OCC, and they'll know by mid-May whether or not they're going to have a childcare provider in there. It's been a real tough go to find a suitable vendor, it's pretty competitive, and if it doesn't pan out, there's going to be possible conversation about, you know, how do we relocate the library? The library presented Amanda Perry. It was a very strong report out about how well they're doing. The numbers are increasing. A lot more young kids and, and young people are using the library, and their space is kind of bursting at the seams. So it was an interesting dovetail to the conversation about how do we fully utilize OCC. There's also a conversation about doing a needs assessment, to have a better understanding what the community wants in terms of services. So there may be some conversation with United Way, which is pretty skilled in doing needs assessments in communities. So that pretty much captured that meeting. I attended the CCRPC Housing Convening meeting. A number of cities and towns from Chittenden County were present, and, and the focus was on, you know, affordable housing. It was a great experience to really hear from all these different towns and cities what they're doing, and, and it was a real opportunity to be able to connect with some of the, you know, towns and cities that are doing some pretty interesting things to, to support and grow affordable housing. The will of the group was, we'd love to reconvene, and maybe we'll do a deep dive about certain topics. One of the ones that rose up to the top was housing trusts that are now becoming more and more prevalent, and how they're really effective in seeding projects for low-income, affordable housing. So we'll stay tuned for gathering again to learn from our other towns and cities out there doing some good work around affordable housing.
Thank you.
Sure.
So, let's see, it was on April twenty-third, myself, Jesse, and Seth sat down and met with David Scher from the Attorney General's Office to discuss the Winuski Fair and Impartial Policing Policy. And we did convey what we'd all expressed coming out of here from council, that we would like to see the areas of the policy that they believe are not in compliance with Act fifty-four outlined in a memo. So I believe our understanding from them is that we'll have that shortly. So I guess we'll just have to wait and see for the written memo from them on kind of what areas of the policy they're taking issues with, and we'll have some time to digest that and deliberate on it here, and go from there. There's a Public Safety Commission meeting tomorrow night here at six thirty. The Public Safety Commission is going to be joined by Lauren Sampson, who is on our planning commission, to discuss municipal master plan. So that'll be a great opportunity if folks from the public want to come out and kind of be a part of the work that the Public Safety Commission is going to be providing input on in the master planning process. Definitely encourage folks to join us. And then, other than that, Jesse mentioned Public Safety Heroes Day, which in addition to there being a bouncy house, which I feel like is a gigantic draw, there'll also be our brand-new shiny Sopfen fire engine. So if nobody has had a chance to see it yet, it was down on Winuski Falls Way Saturday. It's beautiful, definitely go check it out. And I think that about wraps it up for my updates.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Just to reinforce what Jesse said, could not be more proud of all the work that staff did this weekend to accommodate a massive festival that takes over the entire city. I mean, I think our, our report indicates we really had no incidents of any sort of significance, which when you get that many people with opportunities to interact with traffic and each other, that's a feat. So, well planned out, well executed. I know every time I talk to the festival organizers while running around with their heads cut off, just a really positive reflection of what it was like to work with our staff and the job that you all did. So, great, kudos, thank you. Thanks for supporting those events and allowing them to happen in our community and doing such a good job with them. So it says, says a lot about the philosophy that you all work with here. Thank you. One event left off Saturday. I also want to acknowledge our tree committee. I'm not calling them Tree Board, which feels wrong, but, and, and working with John to have a wonderful black gum planted in Allen Park next to the dog park. Great job. Everybody who was involved in that and supporting an organization, that's, we also did a resolution. Ray, thanks for all your work around that as well, in, in honor of Arbor Day. And great, great group doing a lot of awesome work. Planning Commission met and the Housing Commission met since we last met, so it's been busy. Housing Commission, I think we're going to see some priorities, priority statements from them very soon. They've kind of mapped out very similar to what the Planning Commission did when they were starting their work. Hey, this is reframing. You've got the high level back here from Housing of what their goals are, but they've been putting some really thoughtful work together around what their additional goals look like with a little greater specificity about what specific outcomes they'll be striving towards, while also continuing all those conversations about what it is they're targeting and how those numbers are going to be reached. Planning Commission, really rebooting, thanks to Jesse for all her support there in terms of new membership, but just an incredibly high-capacity, high-power group, a lot of discussion about agreement of timelines, and you're also seeing now liaisons from the Planning Commission go out to other commissions, as those, as each of the other commission areas feeds into the master plan, there's going to be a Planning Commission member really assigned to follow that work and, and keep interactive updates coming back to the Planning Commission about what's happening, so it's not kind of a cram at the end. And obviously, staff's been doing a great job supporting the work for the next planning manager as well. And also, just an update, met with Burlington, South Burlington, St. Morone, Helen, as we do every couple of months, and Burlington has indicated that we will have, first off, we have a draft MOU between the three communities in regards to a number of things around the airport that we're going to discuss further, and that's, we're kind of taking a first stab, looking at it now to see if there's anything confining about it from a legal perspective, but expect to have that out to all of you in the next couple of meetings for consideration. And it will be late summer before we hear sort of a final stance on governance, and what that's going to look like for potentially moving that conversation forward in a productive manner.
That's it?
That's it.
It's a fun two weeks.
You forgot to mention that you represented the city very well at the Community Talent Show, as opening MC. You've been busy. So I actually don't have much to report. I was unable to attend the Housing Commission meeting because I had April vacation plans, but it is, the meeting is on my calendar for the next eight months, so I look forward to picking up with that conversation. Next month?
All right, so I, along with the mayor and city manager, presented the Main Street Revitalization Project to, at a community dinner that was really well-attended. I think you said the numbers earlier.
A hundred and fifty people, I think, right?
Yeah, so there were a lot of people there. There was a lot of questions asked, a lot of really good information surfaced out of that, and we'll see more tonight.
And thanks for Jesse's time too on Saturday, to make ourselves available with handmade art signs too, as part of the Waking Windows. We were the city's arm for giving people information about the Main Street project, but actually had some really great interactions, and people would stop by in addition to doing our first Facebook Live, I think, with the city, so it's great.
May, I had one thing I forgot on my list.
Please.
It's now a happy thing. In December, on the, at the December fourth meeting, we had a public hearing on a dog bite case, and put parameters around care and treatment of a specific dog. There was another dog bite today, this afternoon, and the, there's a woman in the hospital, so we are negotiating with There was another dog bite today, this afternoon, and the, there's a woman in the hospital, so we are negotiating with all parties about how best to move forward per the ordinance if there is, there's been no formal complaint made yet. But if there is, we'll need to have a hearing within seven days. So there is a possibility that we will need to do that between now and your next meeting. So I just wanted to flag that for you. I think there's a good likelihood that it can be resolved by, on, between the parties, but just wanted to flag it for you.
Unfortunate to hear. Thank you for that, Zeppe. Okay, we'll now turn over to tonight's regular agenda and we'll start off with the appointment of Erin Barnaby for the Community Services Commission.
I'm here mostly for moral support. So Erin, if I was going to be here, unfortunately it was out today unexpectedly, but I'm here instead. So Erin applied a little bit ago now and has been patient with us as we've kind of worked through process. But a person who I know personally and who brings a lot of commitment to volunteerism, moving from Burlington to Winuski, we were very glad to get her. And thankfully, her track record of community participation has continued as she's crossed the river. So I'll let you sort of speak to your interests in joining the Commission and I think they may have some questions about background, but for more, I set a really solid addition to the group and some really awesome perspective to bring to the table.
Sure, hi, everybody. Yeah, so my partner and I moved here in October and we, we were really excited to join the community and we have, we've been volunteering at the library and we're just so amazed at all of the work that the librarians and do for the community and all of, and how, how much the community just, you know, uses those resources and how valuable they are. And so that was sort of what initiated my interest in the Community Services Commission. And since then, I am starting to get involved with the community gardens and places like that as well. And I'm very excited about the Main Street Project and the public art initiative that goes along with that. So, yeah, that's, that's a little bit of my interest, but please, any questions?
So it's got nothing to do with the fact that you also live now in a library?
I know, right? Yes, so we, we bought the Old Town Library. And actually, we've had people show up and looking for, to borrow books, so.
So I see from your application, you've served at a number of organizations as volunteer. What motivates you to volunteer?
That's a good question. I have, well, a couple of things, you know, I think it's always just been part of my DNA. I grew up in a small town in Vermont and it was just what you did. You, you had to be part of the library, you, you, you know, you just supported your community. I think, for me specifically, I, I have, I do things professionally and I can't always do all of my interests in my professional career and kids and, working with kids and working with kids in the community is a really important part of something that I can't do professionally anymore. And so that's a big part of it. Things that I've done in the past, mentoring, working in maker spaces, stuff like that, comes from my interest in both working with kids, being an artist, doing stuff like that, so.
Having known you from the other side of the river, very excited to have both of you here and have you contributing to the community and it means a lot that you're jumping in so quickly and helping out and it's really, it's exciting to have that energy added to the mix and your knowledge and experience too, so really excited to be part of it and appreciate you putting your time out there and energy and effort into it, so thank you. Other questions for Erin? Any questions about the selection process for commission members from the public? Notice how we indicate that you can't grill people, but. Great, thank you very much for volunteering and now the important part not to be forgotten. I would entertain a motion for approval of the selection for Erin Barnaby to the Community Services Commission.
It's a motion.
Motion by Christine, second by Erin, any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion carries, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Let's go ahead and also do the quarterly treasurer's report, Dr. Tyser.
Thank you.
We'll wrap into the Treasurer's Reserve Fund Report and investment update.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, this is always an interesting time of the year, any fiscal year, when we get an opportunity to report the outcome of three quarters of the fiscal year, nine months into the fiscal year, we can report the financial outcomes. And it also gives us an opportunity to be able to project the last quarter to give the legislative body and yourselves, the council, an opportunity to see what lies ahead. And as you can see, and I'll try to make my report as brief as possible because I know you have a public hearing, go through these very quickly because I sent you a memo. Everything seems to be in order financially for the city. All the various operating funds and the various budgets are looking pretty good. The general fund, as you can see from my report, looks good for the first nine months of the fiscal year. And with the outcome of fiscal year, we, even though it looks like we had $147,000 deficit, there was an item, there are items in there that you had pre-approved, spending of some of the FY '17 surplus to the tune of about $230,000, you pre-approved that. And that's included in the operating cost that you see within the general fund budget. So when you, when you fold those back in, it looks like we'll end up the year with a proposed $83,000 surplus. Now, it's not as great as it has been over the last couple of years, but it is good. It's a positive feature in our finances, it means the city has run their general fund budget very efficiently and very cautiously and the managers have done a good job of making sure that they check and track all their expenditures. Our revenues look good, so as far as the general fund budget is concerned, it looks like we'll end up the year with that kind of a surplus. We'll give you a better perspective on that once the audit is done this summer. But I'm very pleased to announce that we will have that kind of a proposed surplus of some $80,000. Any quick questions on that? I'm going to run through these quickly because I know you've got to other things to do, okay? The rest of the funds, the basically the three enterprise funds, which is the water fund, the wastewater fund and the parking garage fund, which consists of a combination of two funds, all look fairly well. The water fund is in a very healthy mood, looks like we'll do pretty well at the end of the fiscal year. And even though we're having a $28,000 deficit, we had projected a $50,000 deficit when the budget was proposed and we use the, that money, we will get that money from the water fund reserves. In this case, we'll only use $28,000 of that, of our proposal rather than the 50 and that still leaves us, you know, something to put back into that reserve fund. And that water fund is a healthy fund and we can very, touch on that very quickly when we talk about the capital reserve, reserves. The wastewater fund, which is the sewer and sanitation funds, basically look pretty good, even though again, there was a, there is a perspective of having a very large deficit, but that was built into the budget. We understood that when the budget was presented and you approved it way back when. And we had proposed that we would probably end up with about a, using a hundred, about $424,000 of reserves in order to keep that fund floating. And in this particular case, it looks like we'll use probably close to 460. But again, the wastewater fund, the reserves in the wastewater fund is substantial. And so that, that, that's okay. We'll, we'll use some of the reserve, but we had planned on doing that anyway. So it's not going to cause us a great deal of grief, there are some expenditures in there that were necessary and they were built into the budget, you approved, they were done, and it looks like that budget's going to come out okay as far as the, it's, as far, as far as its progress is concerned. The parking garage fund is basically a combination of two funds. It's the on-street parking and the parking garage, okay? And we keep them separate simply because of the fact that there are covenants that govern the parking, use of the parking garage funds, where we don't have those covenants when we, when we talk about the on-street parking. Those are all the meters that are spread around outside of the parking garage. It looks like the on-street parking fund will, will, will look at better than $100,000 projected surplus at the end of the year. People are using the parking, they're paying their parking, et cetera, et cetera, and so that's going extremely well. And we do that particularly through one of the local banks with credit cards and people are used to it now, so they go to the kiosk and away we go. The parking garage is pretty much governed by, it's pretty much governed by some covenants because of the fact that it's under bond. And in that particular fund, looks like we'll break even at the end of the year. Why? Is because we can't use that surplus money for anything but the parking garage. And any excess money that comes out of that, if we had a surplus, it would have to go into the TIF and that's governed by policy. So we don't have any real major control over that. But that fund looks like whatever was budgeted will be spent, the revenues will be collected and that fund will end up with a zero balance again and that, that, that minimal $200,000 reserve will keep in place for other things that we can use for its operation. The other funds that I report to you are basically what we call special revenue funds. There are community justice program, the rental registry program, the TIF, the O'Brien Community Center and Economic Development Programs. The community justice, I mean, the Community Justice Center is basically a break-even because, because they're special revenue funds, we use, use no taxpayer money for those particular funds. They're all self-supporting. And so whatever they are budgeted for, whatever grants are applied for, is what they use. The community justice program will end up with, again, a balanced budget and enough of the same revenues versus expenditures. But in this particular case, this last year, the city paid back $28,000 of a previous grant that came out of their expenditures and simply did not cause any deficit. It actually allowed the program to break even, so that was an excellent feature. The, the TIF, on the other hand, as I said in my memo, is an interesting one, okay? Because the TIF relies on both the property taxes that come out of the TIF district and any other kinds of fees or charges such as...
Pilots.
Yeah, pilots and things of that nature, okay? Unfortunately, as I said in my memo to you, in the, as far as the TIF is concerned this year, we had a couple of pitfalls. Number one is, we, we, we received less revenues from property taxes than we had expected, something to the tune of $211,000. And we also had a pitfall as far as our ground leases are concerned, they didn't get paid and that was about $340,000. So if you put the two together, you got better than a half a million dollars that we did not receive, although we will expend what we had said to in the budget that you folks approved. That's going to lead us to a rather large deficit. We had anticipating a deficit of $110,000 when we started the year in a budget process. We'll end up with a $560,000 projected deficit with these two caveats that I've just mentioned being fulfilled. The, you know, the fortunate thing for us there is the fact is that the TIF does also have its own reserve operating fund as well as its capital fund and that $560,000 can come out of the TIF operating reserve. The only, the only thing that we need to be cautious of for that particular fund is that, as you can see from my report, we started the year with $783,000 in that reserve fund for the TIF. If we expand $560,000 out of it, it now narrows that down pretty much. So we have to be a little cautious about what's going to happen from this point on. The rental registry is basically a self-supporting fund. We had anticipated a very, almost a break-even at budget time. Looks like we'll end up with about $15,000 or $16,000 deficit at the end of this fiscal year with projections. That's pretty good, that's a pretty good balanced budget. The O'Brien Community Center, of course, is something that I'm sure that's been on your mind for all the time because you, you need to wrestle with it and you've heard many, many stories about it, particularly from us in finance. At the beginning of the year, we had budgeted that we would probably end up with a projected $60,000, $67,000 deficit. It looks like, based on the fact that we really haven't got the rentals from the tenants that we wanted to, it looks like we may end up with something around the vicinity of $110,000. And I know that is on your agenda to talk about over the course of the next several months on what to do with that. We've heard stories about what's going to happen there, we don't know. But I'm sure that the city manager and her administration will keep you abreast of what's going on with O'Brien and you can wrestle with that. One of the things that, just remember that the O'Brien Community Center will be folded into the general fund next year because the auditors say we can't keep that as an enterprise fund, it's not self-supporting. The community and economic development is probably the first time we've, we've reported this to you. That fund has a $300,000 revenue item and basically, it looks like they will be underspent. They aren't going to spend as much money as they had intended to, they're really just starting to get off the ground. They're doing a great job and it's going to take a little while, so we take a very sigh of relief and say they're going to end up with a sizable surplus at the end of the year, but I'm sure that we can, we can sustain that as time goes on. All told, you know, as I always like to conclude when I do the, oh, I'm sorry, let me back up again. There are some other community services, special revenue funds, you know, the gardens, this, that, you know, whatever. All self-supporting funds, they're all look, look like they're really coming along well, they're all within balance, they're all taking care of themselves, there's no actual city money, taxpayers' money to help support those, so they're all self-supporting and they're going very, very well and they're very well-managed, so. I, you know, there really isn't, you know, there's a lot of those little funds that, you know, I just take up a lot of paper if I report them to you, I just tell you, those special revenue funds for the community services programs for the community are beneficial to the community and are, they're all in balance, they're all looking really, really good. What I can say is that, you know, from a standpoint of, you know, the enterprise funds, the general funds, all the special revenue funds that I've mentioned, things of that nature, we've got a good handle on them. You know, things are being managed very well, they're very efficiently run, they're very well-managed and people are very cognizant of that. The fact is that the monies they spend to keep these supporting programs going for the city are going to the benefit of the city, so your, your city manager and her administration, her managers are just doing an excellent job and I give kudos to them. Is there any question on that? This is kind of a general overview of the, all the various funds that I've, I've talked to you about.
Any questions in terms for Jim?
If there's anything that you'd like to see differently in our reporting in the future, please let me know, we can, we can do that. But I try to give you a flavor about, you know, where do you stand financially? Because, you know, having been in finance as long as I have, I know it's very, very critical that you understand where the dollars are coming from and where they go and where they should be at a certain point in time. And that's why we use benchmarks, we use that 25, 50, 75% benchmark to say at this time of the year, you should be sort of at this with your expenditures. If they're up and down, we take a very critical look at it. And that's what's nice about this time of the year when we can make our three-month projections, it gives us an opportunity to balance out and do some reallocation within that last three-month period. That is very, very helpful, so you get a chance to look, say, this is what we project you will probably look like at the end of the fiscal year. It, even though they're unaudited, it looks, it looks pretty well.
I would ask, since I wasn't here for the previous budgeting process, in the water fund and wastewater fund, the deficit there is for, I'm guessing, one-time capital expenditures? Does anyone recall?
Jesse?
Yes, so that's how in recent history, we've funded the capital through the water and wastewater funds is with the use of reserves, because we have very healthy reserves and much of that work is, you know, one-time upgrades, smaller projects that we don't necessarily want to bond for as we do with the Headworks project, that we can incrementally modernize our system. So we've used that reserve for that one-time capital expenditure.
We've literally used it like a capital fund. And that's one of the reasons why it's been so high. But we've had periods where we haven't done as much planning on the execution of the funds, so it got built up far beyond what's probably where we want to target it generally without big projects in the pipeline.
The only thing you have to be cautious of with the reserve, and we like to call them reserve funds, they include, you know, monies for capital projects like Jesse said, you know, things that you don't want to go out and bond for. Sometimes don't even want to go out and take out a bank note for it because it would be more expensive than what you, and you have the funds to do that. The only thing is, and we keep a very close watch on them because of the fact is that it's, it's kind of like a savings account, if you use it all up, it's gone, you got nothing left. Then you have to do something drastic and that's, that's not a good way to manage. The last thing is, is, is...
So Jim, we're going to have to keep this to two to three minutes in addition to the report, just to be mindful of everybody's time. So Jim, we're gonna have to keep this to two to three minutes in addition to the report, just to be mindful of everybody's time who's shown up for the public hearing.
Okay, the, the last is, is basically the first report we've ever given you in a current reserve fund report. What I've tried to do with the long, with a very large sheet is to show you all the various reserve funds that we have for all the various different operational activity. And it could be, like I said, they could be reserve funds for both capital needs and operational needs. What I've tried to do in the first three years is to say, hey, if we've got money sitting there, let's put it to use. Let's make money on the money we've got, just sitting there. Let's get the most we can get out of it. So over the course of the last three years, we've been working towards, you know, what, what can we conceivably invest? And be very cautious about our investment. And rather than leave it in a checking account that earns, you know, point four or point five percent, we can put it into another, uh, another investment instrument. And we've done that. We've managed to get to that point now, talking to the various uh, uh, department managers, city manager and what have you. We've now reached that point. We said, okay, we're gonna take our first baby step and we did. We figured that there was enough money sitting in reserves of the water fund and the wastewater fund and some of the parking, the on-street parking money that we could invest about eight-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars. We took out a one-year CD. We got a CD rate at two-point-zero-nine percent. Basically, it's a maturing CD, so we will end up with a yield of about two-point-one-three. That's a lot better than point four. And so we'll make some money there. There's other monies that are still sitting there idle, but we're looking at, how can we invest them over three, six, nine, twelve-month periods? And to be very cautious because it is taxpayer money. And we wanna make sure that we don't blow it. I mean, it's not like investing in the stock market. It's not our money. It's somebody else's money. So we're very cautious.
That's great. We appreciate your work to get that jump started.
If I could just jump in really quickly to support what Jim said, uh, this is a really significant change from how we have managed our reserve funds in the past. And one of the reasons we want to bring this to you is just to make sure you understood that we were investing that eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for a year in a CD. But also, as we go forward with our capital planning efforts and long-term thinking about fund balance, the fund balance that we still have remaining for FY seventeen as well as whatever we develop from this year, um, we're gonna be flagging that for you so you see where those dollars sit. Uh, we also want to be very careful to articulate that when we're talking about the use of one-time money for fund balance for, for example, the cloud migration that we talked about recently, that's in addition to the thirty days cash on hand you have and in addition to the act, other capital funds we've set aside. So it's not just that two-hundred-thousand-dollar, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar pot that we, or three-hundred-thousand-dollar pot that we currently have sitting there. So more to come on that, but we wanted to flag it for you for future conversations.
That's twenty or thirty thousand dollars, two percent over that period of time.
Yep.
In terms of earnings. So that's a, then there extra strip a sidewalk that gets done or absolutely.
Well, any money that we can gain by investing at a higher rate brings to the city will mean something else. We can do better.
Great. We appreciate that. Thank you very much. Other questions for Jim or Jesse on that item? Thank you very much for the detailed memos. It's very helpful because it's coming in.
Thank you for your support.
Unfortunately, we have to jog through the items.
Oh, I understand.
Thank you. Any questions or concerns from the public in regards to those two items? Okay, so seeing and hearing none. Thank you, Dr. Tysehurst. Okay, uh, we're gonna now open up our six-thirty PM public hearing for uh, the Main Street revitalization bo- bond vote that's scheduled for not far away tomorrow, between seven AM and seven PM. Um, we are going to invite John Rusher up. Can you, do anybody else?
Can you press play on the thing and open the front?
And our plan for this evening, if you attended the public session uh previously, we're gonna do a condensed version of that two-and-a-half-hour marathon session. Um, and just go through our slides, the same slides that we covered that evening and then open it up to see if anybody has any questions or concerns. Um, we've got both the engineering team here as well as the, of the city staff who have worked really hard on this project for the entire time. So, uh, very similar to the last, I'm also not gonna stand up and move around as much as last times 'cause um, number one, we want this group to feel like they can ask all the questions and make all the statements they wanna make. But in addition to that, really wanna encourage you uh, as member of the public too. We're gonna do this a little differently than our typical public hearing where we take breaks. So are there any questions? If you could just pop your hands up, um, while, if there's something you've got a question about, while it's on the screen. And let's talk about it uh before we move on. Um, so maybe Jesse, I'll just open up by saying if you wanna introduce the project team.
Sure.
Just for acknowledgement, 'cause there's a lot of people have done a lot of work on this.
I would love to do that. Um, so John Rusher is here, as is Ryan Lambert, our project manager in Public Works. They really carried the water on this project from the city side. Uh, Dave Saladino here, uh, is here from VHB, um, and his team, Dan and Erica as well. So they are the experts on the engineering side of things, the preliminary engineering we've done over the last six months.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you all for all of your work. Appreciate it. Um, so jumping right into the, the general information, you know, first of all, we'll just do a little, yeah, there you go. Uh, for slide changes. Uh, shoot, a little bell. Um, so first up, the, the vote looks just like a regular town meeting day vote, right? So it's between seven AM and seven PM. You can go to the senior center at Barlow Street. Uh, similar to the other public, so you can actually register, update your registration at the polls, great new feature. Thank you to the Secretary of State, um, office for making that happen in Vermont. Uh, but you can go vote, it's very similar, it's just a shorter ballot than you're used to seeing um, on a typical town meeting day. So what are you actually voting on? What you are going to have on is a yes or no question. Do you authorize the city to bond twenty-three million dollars for the Main Street revitalization? And it's really as simple as it is. There's not a, a number of other items on there or another, a number of other authorizing factors. It's, it's that one question that will be there. So if you were to vote yes, uh, what we've kinda consistently tried to message is it's actually what we would call um, a, a yellow light to move forward. I like that analogy, I think Councilor Colson maybe came up with, um, which is um, we're at the point now where we've assembled the basics of a funding package. We're aware of the state and federal subsidies and resources that are available to us. To get to all the final numbers on those, those entities, take things to a point and then they stop and they say, we need to see that there's public support in your community for this. And that's what this vote's about. It's about getting that authorization um, to be able to go for the full funding mechanism, uh, organization. So we can't take it any further without that. If a yes vote were to come uh forward, it also doesn't, with a hundred percent certainty, mean that the project will move forward. Um, we will go back, work with those state and federal funders, come up with the best package possible. And then we're gonna talk about numbers of what we think the impact looks like, for example, for the tax rate, what we would need to do for what, uh, water or wastewater fees and what impact do we think of one percent sales tax, those, those other revenue sources we're talking about using to help pay for the project. We'd have to gauge based on what we've learned from those other funding entities, what the impact of those numbers look like. And then council would have the final say based on this vote, if the vote were for yes, to make, to pull the final trigger on the project. Okay, so that's an important factor. Now, the other question that's come up is like, okay, does that mean then that after that vote, the public has no say? The answer to that question is also no. The final uh decisions are gonna be made in public meetings just like this, um, in these chambers. So, and the communication's not gonna stop just 'cause we get past the vote, right? We're gonna keep communicating with the public about, this is where we're at, this is how things sugar-doubt, and this is what the numbers are looking like. So it does not mean that there won't be another opportunity for input. It does mean that this is the one opportunity to vote on it. Something a little tricky about that is we are also building up uh, funding packages that are dependent on subsequent things. So for example, we're gonna talk about in a, a minute or two, the general fund, potential impact to the general uh, tax rate, right? We don't just implement that automatically. You actually have to vote and approve next year's budget. And when you do that, you'll be voting to authorize us to adjust the tax rate um, as we're gonna propose to do by approving or not approving the project. If people were to vote yes, we move forward and we come back with a tax rate that's unacceptable, public can vote that down. That wouldn't do us very much good 'cause we would be scrambling to then, okay, what do we slash, cut and do to cover this debt that we've now committed ourselves to? So we hope the public won't do that, but that's an option that people have. Um, and in addition to that too, if we do a one percent sales tax, which we're talking about hitting um, beverages, meals and rooms, uh, the public would also have to vote to authorize that as well. So that's kind of the, the voting logistics in terms of what happens. If the vote were a no, um, you, it's not gonna stop us from having to spend money, time and energy on Main Street. We'll just look at it differently. Um, you know, we'll talk about why we decided to do the project in this manner uh, the next few minutes. But um, a no vote would basically send us back to the drawing board of saying, okay, this is what the community's consistently said that they wanted. How do we achieve that um, without this kind of scaled work? So any questions about kinda the voting mechanics?
Yes, sir.
The way I read this saying you said, what does the project cost? You vote yes. It seems to me that you are going to go, we authorize you to go and get the money from either the state or the federal government. But the idea of it is, is if you don't get the money from the state and the federal government, we end up paying for that. So that means you're gonna have a twenty percent increase of your property tax. You're also gonna have a maybe a fifteen to a sixteen percent on your water bill. I don't think it's just a, Sonny, unless you can't afford that kinda stuff. You take a five-thousand-dollar bill that I pay on property tax now, it's another thousand dollars. So I would say that you, we have to come back and vote if we don't get the money from the state and federal government. That, when it stays right there, you say it's only up to you guys. I, I don't go along with that.
Yeah.
I can't vote yes on that.
Yeah, and I, I appreciate that. I, I mean, that's, that's a reality of the way this, the mechanics of this do work is it does put the, puts the final say back in the hands of the council. Um, you know, I think what we've tried to say is right now, with our funding methodologies, the way we're stacking them up from those proposals is, we've looked at between a four to six percent increase in taxes. Um, you know, from a historical perspective, I think you can get a philosophical feel of exactly how this body's felt about increasing taxes by looking at the fact that we haven't gone over two percent in several years. I think it's a pretty cognizant government. But you are correct, that you are theoretically turning that over um, to the council if there's a yes vote. That's, that's true. Um, you know, I think you would be hard-pressed. Um, I'm not gonna speak for everybody who's sitting up here. Um, but if the whole project hit the tax base, you're talking about about sixteen percent, sixteen cent increase. Um, that's never been something that anybody's had any kinda appetite for, uh, that's, that's sitting up here for my conversations. Correct me if you're wrong, if I'm wrong about that. Uh, but a big part of the reason why this project came forward and the timeline that it did is because of the funding opportunities we had to help subsidize it and keep it cheap. Um, to ma- to make that simple. If those were suddenly not there, if they were suddenly not available to us, um, I would think that that would be a very large strategic conversation discussion. Uh, and if, especially if we've said to the voters during this process, we think four to six, yes, it could be more, it could be less. We wanna be clear about that, 'cause if it comes back at seven and council decides to move forward, um, that's, that's a possibility.
Well, I think it would be much clearer to the people who are voting yes or no that if you said, okay, we're authorized to go get the money from the state and the federal government. And they say yes or no, whatever the case may be, then I think it should come back to us and say, okay, what's the final decision? Twenty-three million dollars is gonna come out of our pocket? And if that's the case, do you wanna vote for that twenty-three million dollars? And that means you're increasing your property tax based on five thousand dollars is a thousand dollars? Well, people want fixed income. I don't think they're gonna be able to afford that.
And, and I do appreciate that. There, there are several uh, technical logistic reasons we couldn't come back for a secondary vote, including restrictions on the funding mechanisms. Once those federal funds are obligated, uh, for example, or the state commitments are done, the train sorta starts leaving. Uh, not sorta starts leaving, the train starts leaving and there's bills racked up. So to have to come back for a secondary public vote just logistically isn't, isn't possible. So I, I appreciate it and I know, I know for some people that that's a, that puts it as a non-starter. I get it.
So what's the yes vote on the ballot? Does it state the same thing that you stated on your program for, you know, the last time we had to meet? That means you, you're not coming back for a vote?
That's correct. That's correct. Yes. That is right. And we wanna be really clear about that, that then there's the availability for input then is at public meetings. It's not at the voting booth. Yeah. And voting for the people who sit up here or not.
Just, just to respond to that from a personal perspective, you know, I think if we're putting the best faith analysis of what we expect the tax impact to be between four and six percent out to the voters um, and that it comes in as a yes vote and the funding package that actually comes before me, just speaking personally, was really different than that four to six percent, I wouldn't view moving forward with that project as alignment with the intent of the voters when they showed up on the polls and gave that yes vote. So I think from my perspective, if the package that were to come back is incredibly different than what we're actually putting out and allowing the community to vote on, um, I wouldn't feel comfortable moving forward.
Any other questions on funding mechanics? More coming. So going back to this idea of um, what the goals of the project were and why we prioritized it, you know, the first thing is this is in a new conversation. We've tried to say that really consistently. This is something that Winuski's been a topic for well over a decade is a need for reinvestment in Main Street. And Main Street being a, a key place that we think from a vibrancy and uh, development perspective, uh, is gonna be a focus. So during, uh, most recently, the last seven years specifically, we did the Gateways Planning Project. Then we did the uh, Form-Based Code um, evolution and uh, development of that planning work. Um, and then we also did the Master Transportation Planning Process. Each of those planning processes created a very similar vision for what Main Street should look like. And when people talked about walkability, people talked about making it more pedestrian-friendly. People talked about making it multimodal for uh, bike and uh, bus as well, more friendly for those types of things. And then just quite frankly, we just have infrastructure there that's between a hundred and thirty and a hundred and forty years old. So we also, from a technical perspective, are saying, hey, the growth that's happening on Main Street, you know, in the, in the gateway process and, and Form-Based Code updates, we said, we want this to be a denser area of development. We wanna keep our neighborhoods our neighborhoods, the downtown's a downtown. And then we wanna spread the success of the downtown into these gateway corridors, being East Allen Street, Mounts Bay Avenue and Main Street. The infrastructure that's there does not support that growth. It does not support that work that's currently starting there that you're seeing take root. Form-Based Code was successful, right? You can start to see some of the investment taking place on Main Street. It did what we asked it to do. Um, and this is a way of then coming back and supporting that from an infrastructure standpoint. So modernization of Main Street, you know, again, back to those key principles that people again voiced over and over again through all those planning processes. So this is not some, the project that's pulled out of the hat. This has been a long-running conversation. You know, a, a big piece of that has been too, the development of, we have a lot of conversations in here about how we balance the tax growth, right? How we balance our grand list growth. Um, and it can't, every time there needs to, stuff's not gonna cost less next year than it does this year. It's not the way it works. It's gonna cost you two to three percent more to buy a, a, not to bad example right now, uh, but a box of cereal um, than, than it's going to this year. It just is. Everything we buy in the city is gonna cost us two to three percent more next year uh, to pay for than it did. We've gotta get that money from somewhere. We either do that by turning back the taxpayers' pension every year with residential homes and saying, we have to increase your taxes percentage, or we try to grow and get a little bit more balanced in our, in our, in our tax base. Um, you know, and the best example, uh, probably in the state is Winuski's, the opportunity we took and the risk we took with the downtown redevelopment where we turned twenty-three million dollars worth of property and a hundred-and-ten million dollars worth of property off of smart growth, investment and infrastructure. And that's, that's worked. It's worked really well and worked as intended. And it's gonna, it's actually a large part of, again, why we can do this project is that growth. Um, so that's, that's a lot of the, the thinking behind what pushed this project forward right now. Maybe I'll look back to you guys now, if you wanna talk a little bit through sort of where the project is, what it is and what it looks like.
Sure, so John Maujir, I'm the Public Works Director. Uh, so the, the project is four thousand millimeter feet from the railroad bridge uh, just north of kinda where the circulator is. And then it goes, it extends all the way to the Colchester Line, so. So we're looking at, you know, this route uh, maintains fifteen thousand vehicle trips per day. So it's a, it's a main corridor into the city. And the proposed work, uh, we're looking at is streetscape, utility infrastructure, undergrounding utilities, um, and some traffic signal upgrades. So here's kind of a, a quick profile and plan view of what the um, proposed streetscape would look like. So you can kinda see there's um, this came from some alternatives meetings that we've had. This was the preferred alternative. What it shows is a climbing bike lane uh, along the eastern side. Uh, we've got some reduced uh, Uh, we've got some reduced uh roadway widths. So what we're doing is, is creating a road diet and we're bumping out sidewalks to create more sidewalk and pedestrian amenities. And we're also looking at, um, you know, enhanced street trees and streetscape to help accommodate that form-based code uh that, that's been improved previously. And then I'll, I'll hand it off to, to Dave who's, who's done some concept design in other municipalities like this.
So these are some precedent images showing kind of indicative of the direction that these, um, these improvements would lead um, with the upper right being St. Albans that shows landscaped bullabouts with the, 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 um, street lighting with the banners. Uh, the tree is not quite mature yet and kind of similar look and feel with integrating the concrete sidewalk, brick, pavers, and curbs uh, along, along Main Street. Similarly, here, here's some, uh, again, precedent images from, from elsewhere. Uh, the upper right shows of, that's a fully protected uh two-way bike lane or cycle track. Um, in this case, on Main Street, we'll have one direction that's protected. Uh, off to the right, stormwater was a, stormwater and green infrastructure was a really important component to integrate into the plans. So uh, you can make out here some of the infiltration, stormwater infiltration, rather than putting it all into catch basins, trying to get some of that back into the, into the ground. Uh, and then some of the, the amenities, the, the trashcans, and that's much more, much more detailed and lots of opportunity to weigh in on the look and feel of, of those. But it's the type of thing we'll be looking into further.
So this is the preliminary engineering cost estimate that um came out of the process VHB did. Uh, so there's a lot of numbers on here, but this is where we come up with the twenty-three million dollars. Just in summary, it's about eight million dollars in municipal utilities, so water, wastewater, and stormwater. Those are the really old aging infrastructure that's currently under the street. Um, about seven and a half million dollars for those streetscape improvements, paving, um, you know, those traffic calming measures that will get those fifteen thousand cars a day that come through our city to slow down and create more of a place. Um, and then about six point five million to um underground the overhead utilities um, that will improve the aesthetic of the street and enable that full build-out of Main Street over time. You can also see on this slide, it's probably pretty hard to read from the audience, but broken down by um phase of the project as well. And this presentation is on our website if you wanna go and take a detailed look at it.
So shifting back to why we do, um, why we prioritize projects and why we work with them. We took a process a few years ago and we asked the community, again, this is, the communities are in a constant stage of planning, right? It's sort of, when there's a problem in the legislature or communities, what do we do? We, we create commissions or we create study groups, or we commission uh reports to be developed, or we initiate planning processes. Right? That's what we do. That's like the government answer for everything. Um, when there's a problem or an opportunity, either one. Um, what's really cool is when we get to take those planning processes and actually turn them into a, an action, right? And that's a lot about what this project is about, is trying to seize upon an opportunity where we did a process a few years ago to come up with this strategic vision statement back here. And we created a word cloud uh based off of responses. We asked people, tell us your top three reasons why you either live here or why you're going to stay here. What, what's gonna make you stay in Winuski, wanna be part of this community? And those are the things that came up, right? Things like community, downtown, city, uh, diversity, restaurants, uh, market, affordable, street, river, taxes. People put taxes on there. I said in the public meeting, I think it's either cuz they want more of them, right? Uh, I'm just, yeah. So in seriousness though, I, I think the affordability piece, downtown, city, all those things came back to us. And we came up with the following slide as the strategic vision statement. And when we weigh investments and we prioritize budgets now, we use this as our guide to say, are we hitting one of these benchmarks with whatever we're spending the money on, right? And it's a different way of thinking about budgeting. It's not just taking whatever comes forward or flies forward from the front. It's hopefully keeping us on a, a strategic path towards achieving a vision that people wanna see. And when we looked at this project and started to weigh it, the question was, did it check all these boxes? And we felt like it did, right? And economic vitality, does it create new opportunity for business development? It absolutely does. Number two, municipal infrastructure. It's one of our biggest stretches of infrastructure, longest stretches of infrastructure, and oldest stretches of infrastructure we have. Housing, does it, does it offer an opportunity for both affordable and market rate housing to be developed? It does. It lowers the barrier and true to the market, better supports the development taking place there, and lowers the cost of that development. And then safe, healthy, connected people. Does it create an opportunity for people to build community around spaces to walk more? And there's no child that gets to school without touching Main Street, for example. Um, does it serve that purpose? It absolutely does. So we felt strongly like it checked all those boxes as we went into the uh process. And I'm actually gonna skip through this one cuz we just, we just talked about that. But I just wanna suffice to say that the Tax Department Financing District is maturing in 2024. That is on, on pace to be paid back um and, and 2024. We are talking about forward committing a percentage of those funds to help pay for this project, okay? And what that means is with the Tax Department Financing District, all the infrastructure that was built downtown to support uh, the redevelopment down there, uh, that debt has been paid off of the difference between what the original taxable value was. It was actually about twenty-three and a half million and the hundred and ten million that it, that's, it's worth now. So that difference, that money is actually going to pay our debt. When that debt's expired, it actually rolls back into our general fund, which is a great thing. It's a great egg for the city. It was a, a wonderful move, right, and created financial sustainability for the community. We're talking about forward committing a portion of those funds. What we've talked about is 2024 approaches is what is not a good strategy is to suddenly shoot from the hip when that money's available. It's also disingenuous, we've consistently felt, to just hand it back to the tax rate and just do across-the-board declination of the tax rate. Um, doesn't mean that that can't be done in some manner, but to not reinvest some of that money that has been built from that and back into infrastructure, to us has consistently not sounded like a good policy. And we've wanted to be ahead of this conversation and talk about making sure we have a plan as 2024 arrives, not be scurrying at the end. Yes? Yes?
Yeah. Um, thinking about the cost of the project versus what exists at the present time. This hundred and thirty years of hatching and replacing bits and pieces and so on. Basically, a hundred, a century of deferred maintenance that hasn't been adequately addressed. Have, have you, um, have you tried to cost out? Right? So you have this twenty-three million dollar package that you think will pay for what we have today. What's the other side of the coin? What are the costs that are likely to accrue to the community if this isn't passed and we continue the same kind of fixes verse name, dig up this little stretch of corroding pipe, um, close down the water delivery system because you get bad, I don't know, lead, I, for water, anything else, lead levels or something in it? I, I mean, you have to, it would be inter- did, did you do an alternative cost? Because if this fails, you'll have to go back and think about how you put the things together in small pieces, right, that are possibly fundable for this little bit plus that in a larger, larger plan. But it's absolutely clear to me that if this isn't taken care of in the next five to ten years, it's gonna cost a lot more than twenty-three million dollars to deal with it, you know, in, in two thousand twenty-eight. But did you do any, did you look at that? Did you?
So the, the fixed things we can measure is what's the inflation of, of cost of goods and cost of construction over the course of years? The answer is around two to three percent, three to four percent. Um, from a, from a infrastructure failure standpoint, it's a much more complex question because infrastructure doesn't tell us when it's gonna fail, it just does. Um, so I don't know if you guys have had any thinking along those lines with confidence to, to talk numbers. But I'll just also say from an opportunity cost standpoint, we already have one housing development that meets the definition of providing affordable housing in the community that was scaled back because there was a significant additional cost then built into the project budget because there was infrastructure surprises as they started to. This is the mixed commercial use uh and housing development that's located uh where uh O'Brien's Pub used to be. Um, that project actually had to scale back because of additional costs associated with hooking up to our infrastructure. Do you guys wanna comment any further on the?
The, so we haven't done that, that financial um analysis. I think all the points the mayor just made are accurate and would, and demonstrate that increased expense over time. The other um thing that we have talked about as a project team when we talked about potentially scaling the project or phasing the project is that an advantage of doing it all at once is that you're excavating once, you're paving once, you're disturbing the ground once. If we start responding on a piecemeal emergency basis, those costs are going to be born again and again and again along Main Street. I'm not sure if there's an industry standard of the percentage that adds to a project. Um, but it certainly would be, in aggregate, would be more than the present-day value of twenty-three million dollars to do it comprehensively. Um, and then finally, the mayor has mentioned this earlier, but um, you know, the perp- one of the significant purposes of coming now is we believe that there is the, the significant um subsidy to the project from the state and federal government that may or may not be available in the future. So I think it's hard to, to think about that uncertain, the uncertainty of that subsidy coming back to the city if we were needing to do this on an incremental basis.
Yeah. Can I share a quick little funding anecdote? It's not right along the lines of what you're saying, but I did hear something really interesting the other day that I thought was pretty motivational from a funding standpoint. Um, when South Burlington, it was either in nineteen ninety-five or nineteen ninety-six, redid about a one-mile stretch, so similar in scope in a lot of ways, and it's not an apples-apples comparison, but a one-mile stretch of Dorset Street, um, it was in nineteen ninety-five. Uh, and they did the same work of kind of, you know, undergrounding the lines, um, a lot of similar street redesign. And that project cost between fifteen and sixteen million dollars, somewhere right in that range. So for thirteen years later, for a really similar project in size to potentially be doable for twenty-three million dollars, I just thought was, um, that was pretty motivational and interesting to me.
Yes?
I would just like to point out that this is not necessarily a choice of spend twenty-three million dollars and do absolutely nothing. Uh, I heard you say that fixing the water and sewer utilities of approximately eight million dollars of the twenty-three million dollars is that. Six point five million dollars of putting the utilities underground. Boy, utilities underground look great. It's a, it's a nice way to go. It's with a six point five million dollar price tag, putting, redoing the utilities above ground would be a lot cheaper. I think the problem a lot of citizens have, including the gentleman who had to leave, is that this is four to six percent tax hike. Price tag at twenty-three million dollars seems very high. Um, especially when we're looking at higher taxes coming at us for some school projects that will be coming along as well. Because our property taxes are not just what the city does, it's what the school does. The city is contemplating, or excuse me, the, the school district is planning on a replacement of their heating system and other infrastructure costs. So more tax rises are likely coming your way. Uh, so, uh, at this point, my own preference would be to put this project a little more bare bones and a little less, a little less fancy. Uh, because, you know, in the neighborhoods, if people want fixed incomes, this tax rise is gonna have a real impact. We're delaying this project until the TIF money comes more available.
Yeah, and you know, if we're talking, so people know numbers, if we're talking about six percent, that's roughly about a hundred and fifty bucks per year on the average home in Winuski. So certainly spread over for a fixed-income family, we understand any amount has an impact um, and has, has a, is a burden, right? And causes the folks to make adjustments to their budgets. Um, I'll, I'll just say that one of the reasons why we have, uh, just if you could go to the past few budget cycle, tax increases, uh, yeah. One of the reasons why, again, if, if you come to the two-hour marathon sessions on budget sessions at the school each year, uh, one thing we talk a lot about when we put our budgets together is we know there are some large infrastructure needs coming. We have chronically underfunded infrastructure in the city of Winuski for decades. This is not a problem that we're, um, that we're unaware of and have become increasingly uh constrained on. Um, and one of the reasons why we've tried to keep these increases low, um, it would be awesome for us to be, be able to provide more soft services and more programming. We would love to do that. We think it's effective. It makes the place a great place to live. But I think we've been very cognizant in two percent, point nine-nine percent, point seven-three percent, one point two-one percent, and two percent tax increases over the last five fiscal years of the city really doing our, our part to keep our tax rate increases as low as possible. And those each year reflect numbers that are below the cost of living adjustment for that fiscal year. Meaning that we got, we got blood from stones. I don't know how else to say it. Um, you know, we, we worked hard to keep it as low as possible, understanding that this would come forward. So I, I do appreciate it. It doesn't mean that each of those tax impacts didn't have, uh, you know, impacts on households. We do, we do appreciate that. But I do wanna point out that one of the reasons why we've tried to keep those operational costs low and capped is to try to help with infrastructure needs if we could get projects together. Yes, sir?
Um, just kind of as a counterpoint to that, has there been any, um, like data or any kind of extrapolation as to what type of money may actually come from the revitalization of this? Like, to think about it from the other side of things, like, I'm not pointing at all, but I understand it, but with revitalizing that, isn't there going to be new business and new influx of money there? Is there any, any numbers on that or any projections on that?
Yeah, so the answer we know is yes, but the problem is tying specific numbers to it with assurances. Because one thing the city's not doing in this case, like we did with the TIF, is controlling what the development looks like. We pretty much helped decide what that tax base was gonna look like in those developments. We were part of those conversations. So we very intricately built that to say, if this does what it's supposed to do, it'll pay for itself. What's very different about Main Street is we're not buying any property. We're only using the existing city property that's there. And then it's up to the people who own the private pieces of property to make decisions about what happens with those pieces of property. When we went to Form-Based Code three year, three years ago, um, the idea was to increase opportunities for density at Main Street that would allow folks to find opportunities to use some of those properties differently, quite frankly, um, and allow for digital dis- density. Um, part of the idea there is it increases grand list value and growth. So we've identified properties. Heather's our Economic Development Officer. You know, they've done a lot of work on identifying what potential looks like and what properties, you know, we think are going to go up and down Main Street, but that is very private-focused. So we have not built our models super contingent upon additional tax rate coming in. One would say that that's a conservative way of doing it, not hedging on those future incomes. Um, and it, it probably is, but just from a functional standpoint, it's a, that's a hard thing to do.
And sir, just briefly in regards to the grounding of the lines, and I could be wrong here, so if I am, please correct me. But I believe, you know, in talking about scaling back the project in that area, I do believe that putting the lines underground just isn't a function of appearance. Um, also the above-ground lines do have an impact for what some developers might be able to do with certain properties. So it's actually inhibiting growth in some ways. Is that correct?
Yep.
Yes.
Well, I know, I was hoping, one of the only ones they could, they could, the only way they could put it so close to the street was to put the utilities underground. Those utilities are underground now.
Yep.
Because be in front of building with too close to utilities, but people could reach out for safety reasons. Is there a reason why the buildings have to be so close to the street? Because now you got no buffer. Are there gonna be buffers from the buildings to the street with like a green belt or anything? Or it's just gonna be, everything's gonna be tight to the street like the downtown area?
It will, there's a green belt built into this, to the proposed project. The idea has always been that Main Street's really, really, really wide, and it is. And there's a lot of real estate there, quite frankly, that we think could be better used.
Well, I know some single, people, single-family houses up there, they're ready to just get out because they don't, they don't think they're welcome anymore.
Well, that, that's unfortunate. I know there's, there was a rumor flying around that we're purchasing five or six homes and tearing those down. And that's, that, that just couldn't be closer to the truth. You know, when zoning was redone, the opportunities created there for people to do things with their property, there's absolutely no requirement for people to do things with their property. They're welcome to live there and they're welcome to live there.
They've got realtor and developers after them.
Yeah. Well, unfortunately, that's happening across the city from a housing perspective. I mean, there's a recent story of, you know, folks going and hanging stuff on doors to say, if you're thinking about selling your house, please let me know. Um, and that's, that's, that goes back to, to some- And that's, that's, that goes back to, to some of that work we're doing with the, the Housing Commission is to talk about what we can do to retain affordability in the community. And we've invested a lot in, in working that conversation forward and setting up that commission to focus on that issue. So we, we are working on that. That's not one that there's really easy silver bullets.
Well, lots of, the, the right side going up are really deep.
Yeah.
Or some of them are really, really deep, which people would love to get hold of, you know, developers would love to get hold of those because lots are so deep.
Right.
You've got a lot of, you've got a hundred feet, two hundred feet behind some of those houses there. And people want them.
And that's, that's the conversation with this, that we're not, we're not reopening and making that decision again. We're trying to build off of a decision we made when we updated zoning. When we, when we went with Form-Based Code, we made that decision to move things closer to the street and try to use the street, the, the city property there differently and to try to create an atmosphere that was that more urban feel, quite frankly, and more public vibrancy feel. And that decision got made three years ago, so we're really working now to support that the best we can moving forward. So, and part of that is buried utilities was always in that kind of long-term vision. And then the other just kind of general point that we've tried to make several times is it's, it's more expensive, more disruptive from a technical standpoint. And it, yes, the price tag to do just the water portion of it might be six and a half million dollars, but you still have to cover it back up. When you dig, you dig the hole, you gotta fill it back in. And the question is, are we gonna, if we did one piecemeal part of it, would we just put what's there back on top of it? And that would have an expense too that would look different and, and would be higher than just replacing the six point five million dollar pipes.
Yes?
I had sort of a, a side question, but related to this. Is there an interval or a plan in the future to reassess house site values to base the taxation rate on?
So that's, that's the, a state mandated formula that's, that's used called the common level of appraisal. Common level appraisal is a percentage where they, they take what properties are selling for versus what they're valued at. If you have a home, for example, that we assess at eighty thousand dollars that sells for a hundred thousand dollars, and that was our average, our common level of appraisal would be eighty percent. So that eight, eighty thousand, so that eighty percent of a hundred. When it hits certain benchmarks, you're required to do certain things. Our common level of appraisal last check.
About ninety-two percent.
Yeah, ninety-two. So as, as much as it feels like things are happening, people are seeing increases, actually from a pricing perspective, that's not really mathematically accurate. So it's, there's advantages and disadvantages to doing reappraisals. You know, taxes change, funding formulas. You'll hear it probably talked about more on the education side because it's, it has even more to do with the way education funding works too. So we, you know, we have a decision point where the state makes us do it. There's justifiable times beforehand too where we could do it. It's an expensive process. It's, it's not cheap. You have to go back through and reassess everybody's home. So it's one that most towns, cities and municipalities wait until the numbers get pretty close to doing.
Any other items on that?
Good question. Going back, Jesse, maybe to, we talked about past planning goals and why produce the project. Could we go to the timing of potential funding sources? Thank you. So this goes back to, you know, sort of what we have talked about in terms of why now for the funding sources. You know, again, the increase in potential cost to the project, it's not gonna get cheaper. Time-sensitive from state and federal programs. You know, if you wanna see similar outcomes from funding programs we're looking at, working with, St. Albans and Berry are, are great examples. Two towns that did, you know, pretty wholesale reconstruction of main strips. You know, I can't say enough about what's happened in St. Albans as a direct result of it and Berry too. I mean, from a positive reflection standpoint, it's been, been great to, to use it as an opportunity to, example. And then, I guess if you could go to the next slide, Jesse. In terms of how we're looking at paying for it, if folks haven't seen these numbers yet, what we're talking about right now in general terms is that four to six percent general fund increase, right? So that's the general fund tax impact that we're discussing. We wanna be really clear that we're trying not to hamstrung, hamstrung the conversation to just saying if it's over that by a half a cent or half a penny on the rate that, you know, we've affixed that, but we wanna say that that's right now what our modeling's got us at. And you know, point made here was a good one that, you know, there's not probably a really strong appetite if we've put something forward and said this is what it is and it comes back as something completely different. You know, from a personal reflection standpoint, I would have a real issue with that too. Again, the tax reform and finance district allows us to reinvest in the community from an infrastructure standpoint. And then we're talking about local option stats, which is something that the public actually voted in favor of three years ago. One percent on rooms, meals and beverages. So we're starting that conversation with business owners and getting feedback on that. That's something that they've heard before. Once we got the vote to authorize, voters authorized us to implement that last time, we actually set it aside because we were in the process of setting up paid parking. And we said from a implementation standpoint, let's let parking settle down before we come back with the one percent tax too. I think parking, paid parking is something everybody's figured out and have realized. It's not, not maybe the negative thing that some people thought it would be. And businesses have continued to thrive and have continued to grow. And then we're also talking about water and wastewater fees. Oh, yes?
I would encourage you to move ahead with the one percent sales tax. I, I think it's been a kind of a way to hold off on the downtown businesses, but it's time for them to help out a bit. I don't know anybody among my circle of friends who say, oh, golly, let's eat in Woduski tonight because it's one percent cheaper than eating in Burlington.
Yeah. And that, and that's a great point is we are in a donut hole. We are really the only connected community to us that has a similar economic scale that does not have one percent tax. So one thing we have had very directed feedback on from the business owners is they really appreciate it if you can tie it to something and show them what the value is and something that they can also point to their customers for and to. So we've appreciated that and another thinking has been maybe there's, there will be an opportunity in the future to tie it to specific projects or a specific activity. Like you said, doesn't mean that if this doesn't go through, we couldn't come back and look at other ways to do that. Right now, those, those funds are expected to be about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of revenue that we would apply towards the debt service here. And then I'll just throw, I'll throw in there too that the wastewater and water fees, right now about two percent increase we're looking at, which would still keep us well below our regional average. And we have not touched water and wastewater fees since.
Two thousand twelve.
Two thousand twelve. Two thousand twelve. A lot of communities, you'll see them do it every year. We haven't touched ours in about six years and we're, we're below average. Any other comments there, guys, items I'm missing?
I think a question that's come up at other meetings about the, how we're investing in our capital, we talked about a little before, the fund balance. In, in none of the modeling that staff have put together thus far are we touching debt service or capital dollars used for other capital projects in the city. So our intent is to, if this is approved by the voters, to be able to continue that capital investment in the neighborhoods as well. So we're, I just wanna make clear that we're not displacing that, those resources to the neighborhoods.
Yeah, and that's a, a slide we, we didn't go through that you, if you look at this online, you'll see is, back to the question about do you know how much you might get back from development of the, redevelopment of parcels with the tax value that would be? Is while we don't assign values to it, we do understand that from a return on investment standpoint, both because of the subsidy available, but also because we expect the investment to create additional tax base, that this has a really strong return on investment for the taxpayers for the dollars that they spend. It's different, just being blunt, it's different than redoing Weaver Street. It's different than redoing Hickok Street. It's different. The economic impact is different. The funding streams are different. Those are residential streets. What this does do, back to Doug's question about what the cost of not doing it is, is it means that we don't spend capital fund dollars on Main Street, right? Will we have to? We most assuredly will. There would be something that'll come up where we'll have to use our general capital fund over time to do some improvements there. But it should theoretically free up the opportunity to use those monies we might otherwise be spending to correct, to Main Street. They will be pigeonholed with these funds and offer us more flexibility to do those other streets with our general capital funding support.
Yes?
Well, the reason I ask that question is because I wanted to offer like a different perspective. A, a, a younger perspective.
Yeah.
Just because like I know that my colleagues, and the reason why I moved to Woduski from out of state to this area as a young professional is because of the downtown. And that's why I moved here. And that's where I am right now, and I understand that things will change. But I see this more so as an, an investment in the community to then gain those benefits years down the road as the community grows versus a hit to currently. You know, I know that, you know, I know that it's gonna hopefully increase the value of properties. It's gonna increase, you know, if people are gonna, more people are gonna wanna move here. I know like young professionals wanna move here. And you can see how like, you know, houses on the market or apartments on the market for one day, two days, and they sell above asking. That's just from a real estate perspective, but also people wanna come here, you know. More things that we wanna do, I spoke to two or three people today that basically were like, oh, this sounds like a great idea. Any reason for me not to go downtown is a great reason for me to just stay and spend my money here. I was like, I, I would love to have more things to do here so I didn't have to go down to Burlington. I mean, that's just anecdotal testimony, but that's keeping more of that spending money in this area as well. I think a lot of it has to do with, unfortunately, you know, I can speak, because I'm part of this generation, like, facing facade of what's going on. You know, a lot of people are gonna see underground lines and things like that. They're gonna like that. They're gonna see those pictures. They're gonna like those things. And I don't know, I just, I, I get where the, I definitely understand where the concern is coming from. I'm not a little bit at all, but for me to put this money in a note at some point, as, as a new owner in this area, at some point I will get dividends. And then to what he was saying before about, you know, not having another vote and you guys, you know, doing that sort of thing. You know, it's, it's our expectation as voters and as constituents in this community that like having you guys on this council, that you're not gonna turn and be like, thirty percent, here you go, not my problem. Like, that's your job to, to not do that. And so I, I, I understand where he's coming from, but to offer a different perspective, to have faith that you guys are trying to increase the community and also the proof of what the downtown has done to revitalize this community. You know, I, I, like I said, I came from out of state, so I never knew what this place was before. You know, the revitalization, I never knew what this name was before, but I have colleagues who went to college here. When I mentioned I was moving to Woduski or whatever, they were like, why would you, why would you do that? That was, that's their opinion. I don't know. I'm not saying anything bad or opposite, but, but it was just a different, it was a different perspective. I've just offered a different perspective, that's all. I'm not saying which one is right or wrong.
True. Thank you. Yes, sir?
Yeah, and my perspective is probably a little bit different than this one's right here.
Which is good.
Yeah, I've lived in the same house on Main Street for the last seventy years. I have seen a lot of problems with Woduski and I've seen a lot of problems with Main Street. I know why you're saying what needs to be done now, but my question is why now? For the last seventy years, Main Street's been ignored totally. There's traffic by my house just coming down here today. It took me ten minutes to get on my driveway because on my spring and Main Street, there's two lines of traffic. There's a place where it's supposed to split. It splits all the way up by Fuddang, which is probably a good two, three hundred feet beyond. With two lanes of traffic, can you try to get out? You can't do it.
Yeah.
All right? The last time anything was done on Main Street, when the area was refurbished. Okay, they put in new trees. I found out how much each tree cost. If you go on Main Street, you'll see the trees. You know, they cost seven hundred dollars each. To me, that's mismanagement. That's just not supposed to be in any way, shape or form. We talk about Downstreet. Hey, Downstreet, downtown Woduski is beautiful right now. How about discussing the thirty years we had nothing there? We're gonna do this fabulous Renaissance project.
Yeah.
What did they do? They ripped up half the city in the thirty years. It was an empty hole. Then they turned around and we redo this. We had Mr. Niket come in and he built this beautiful design thing. Now we've got a roundabout in the middle of the city and it's the largest place for accidents in the state. That's the last thing I heard. That doesn't sound like that's progress to me. You wanna do all these fantastic things, fine, but if it goes to you and we don't get the state funding, we don't get the federal funding, it goes into your life, and we're going to go ahead and do this, I'm on a fixed income. You're gonna throw me out of my house. How am I supposed to look at that? I used to know everybody on the city council. I don't know any of you with the exception of one person that I personally went to see and he come and see me. So in your perspective as such, yeah, this needs to be done. It should have been done years ago. Woduski and Main Street have been ignored. So why the big fun to do all this immediately, everything, let's do it. Oh, yeah, we can do all this and fumble it together. I know the gentleman that was just left a little while ago. I can't possibly vote for this the way it stands, not without a guarantee that we're gonna get the federal funds. It falls back on you and we have no other vote? No way.
Yeah, unfortunately, just the, the mechanics of that are, we, we can't secure those until they see that we have, we have the legal authorization to, to do the work. So I understand, I understand your perspective. And I, you know, I, I think we're trying very hard to, to do a project that is gonna hopefully make up for years of lack of investment. That's part of the vision of what we're trying to accomplish with this. And it's, it, it's an ask, you know, we understand that. And our, our job here is to try to make the information as readily available as possible and give you all a clear understanding exactly how the decision-making mechanics work on it. And you're, you know, it's, it's correct that there has to be faith that the council at some point's gonna perform its fiduciary and community-oriented duties responsibly. And one of the reasons why we put the tax increases up there is to try to show that we've, we've tried very hard in the past to be very fiscally responsible. It hasn't been a freewheeling tax and spin type of environment despite the fact that we've grown. So I appreciate all your concerns. I don't, you know, there's a, there's a significant ask before the community. Yes?
My perspective is a little bit different, I think, from you two. I come as a recent migrant to this place, seven years ago, as a retiree and on a fixed income. But my concern is fundamentally about, about a kind of social responsibility. An intergenerational and responsibility to the place that I have adopted as my owner and I'm living in. And I see that that hasn't been done effectively in the past here. The kind of thing that this gentleman was talking about probably is as much, not, not so much because there isn't an intergenerational commitment to the place, but a limited set of resources to invest in, in the place. It's a kind of problem of socioeconomic status perhaps. It's, it's, it's a problem of disposable income that, that the community has all had to invest in this particular place, but it hasn't been invested. And somehow, we have to find a way to break through the barrier of intergenerational investment in schools and, and, and in the city infrastructure that supports both business and, and citizens' activity. And, and so that's why I see this as something that's just really fundamentally important to the future going forward. But I'm, I'm absolutely also certain that if the funding package doesn't work out, I think we can rely on our city council is not to impose a twenty percent tax increase on, on the community. We have to find, be very creative and find other ways of putting the bits and pieces together to make it, to make it work. Take a longer perspective, look at what is absolutely essential the way this gentleman is talking about. But we have to, we have to make those kinds of investments, because if we don't, we won't be able to place to live in the future.
Yeah, if we get a hundred and thirty to a hundred and forty years out of the new infrastructure, that would, that would be quite a forward commitment to future generations. But that does undermine the thinking and the same arguments that went into why do the downtown was to try to create a sustainable tax base here. The year after year does. Um, that year after year doesn't require the same lift on behalf, half of residential households for that type of investment that we are relying on. Other questions, comments? Um, what's next timeline? So for, from a funding perspective, the federal funding applications, other funding, um, packages will come together if we're authorized. Almost immediately we'll go right to work on that with final numbers hopefully coming forward in late summer. So this is not gonna be a conversation that's gonna drag over time. We would have additional public hearings, um, in regards to those additional opportunities for people to weigh in. Um, then in two thousand nineteen, actually, there should be another item on here is you would see the general fund and the one percent, uh, very likely on the, on that ballot in March. Um, one percent could come earlier on one of the fall votes, because this is a midterm year where we'll have legislative vote in August and in November. Uh, but you can expect those items to come back in terms, from a ballot perspective. And then we're looking at two construction seasons. Um, and this goes back to this idea of trying to do things all at once versus a phased approach. Is we think we can do it in sections and do it in a way that allows us to bifurcate traffic in an organized way. So there's already been some thinking done on that. Um, we haven't gotten to the execution plan yet on a project. We don't have a yellow or a green light to move forward on. Those types of details aren't all worked out, but they've been theorized and put together from a conceptual standpoint in terms of how to deal with those, those types of concerns from a construction management standpoint. Any other benchmarks that are missing in the process from your perspectives? Okay, and then, um, and we'd be talking about construction late summer of next year, possibly, right? Or, excuse me, construction season next year. Do you guys want to?
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty, twenty twenty, so we're, I don't know, twenty twenty now.
We have about a year of, between a go vote and a shovel on the ground, we have about a year of design and permitting left.
Thank you. Now we're back to that vote screen. So this is it. You know, this is, uh, this is what we do, is try to take an opportunity, a community vision, and turn it into something that's tangible, actionable, that can be executed and done. And now, share the facts with people and let you make a decision and, and how we move forward. Uh, that's how democracy works. So, we're not a referendum state in Vermont, which is a beautiful thing in my opinion in a lot of cases, but this is a really direct opportunity to make a decision on what will become our largest infrastructure investment since the downtown redevelopment and one of the largest projects that the state sees. Um, so it's a, it's a huge opportunity, um, and one that again, we're very respectful of everybody's concerns and have tried our best to try to mitigate those. Uh, but we do put this, this project forward very confidently that it achieves that vision and has that return on investment for voters um, in terms of what the outcome for the community will look like. So, we'll open it up now and see if there's any comments, questions, concerns from council and from the public perspective too. This, did this two and a half hours, uh, the, the last go around, so that was a very condensed version. If you wanna watch the full town meeting, to encourage you to do so, we, we went even further into some of the philosophy behind why we did it and what got up to this, got us up to this point, but in a scale of a meeting like this. Yes?
Um, I just wanna say, I mean, both to Dave who just left and then your points as well. I really do understand the, that there being some uncomfortability around taking a vote on something that is not a concrete, exact dollar figure. Um, that is a little weird and it's different than a lot of other bond votes. Um, and so I understand the under, uncomfortability about it resting with the council after rather than back to the voters. Luckily with the timeframe, there is another opportunity to vote in those town meeting day elections. Some of us will be up for reelection, so. Uh, you know, that is a chance to, if it's, uh, if the direction that we moved in is not following, you know, the will of the voters, I think that's always an opportunity to weigh in. But I think, like I said, it's a really firm commitment that I personally have of, um, when the, you know, the folks who show up at the polls tomorrow, the results of the vote, I feel like represent a direct intention um, of the direction that the voters want us to move in. And I think that it's our responsibility as stewards of the public, well, me personally at least, um, to follow that intent.
I have curiosity, um, legally, could that ballot have been written so that it would state something not to exceed a four percent tax increase?
Uh, my answer to that is probably not, um, from a legal perspective. Uh, but I don't, I don't know the answer to that question, although we floated it to our council.
I did not ask that direct question. I think there, there's actually two parts to that, well, a couple of things. So one, um, says kind of in the municipal weeds, but all bond votes are authorization votes, not obligation votes. So with any bond vote we take, it is ultimately up to the council whether to move a project forward. Um, two, I don't know, I did not ask our legal question, our legal counsel that specific question. Um, what I can tell you is that may not have passed muster with the state and federal funders. So one of the reasons to move this forward now is to really understand from them what they are, at what level they are willing to subsidize the project. And if there was uncertainty in that, in that wording, they may not have seen that as a true commitment from the community that this is an important project to move forward, um, and therefore either not subsidized it or subsidized it at a lower rate.
No, the, you cannot put a percentage in a, in a municipal vote that I'm aware of, is my understanding. In Vermont, you have to actually use a dollar amount. We shall raise da-da-da-da-da by taxes. Um, and it's not, it's not a range type of function, so, um, that's been my past experience with that. So I think we saw those problematic on a couple of levels. And frankly, we've really struggled with what to put in these presentations, because we've done the modeling on there and then what comes back. We wanted to be really thoughtful and careful about, about that messaging and leaving room for council to make some adjustments to the final. Let's say the difference between tapping future TIF revenue, um, at a, at a certain click is a, a difference in the percentage and takes you from four to five percent. Do you make that strategic decision to use less of the TIF revenue now and instead have a general fund increase of five percent? Um, those are the type of balancing conversations we could have too, um, in terms of those, how those numbers might fit together in the end. Yes?
Um, I think you said fifteen thousand cars a day, uh, currently. Is there any projection of whether it's going to, uh, be able, the redevelopment's gonna be able to accommodate more traffic or will it remain about the same?
Yeah, I think we turned to you last time for that, right? I'd love to hear it.
Sorry, I wasn't at the last one.
And so we did increase traffic. We use the standard state growth for the next twenty years. Then we also did some areas where there was additional growth on top of that planned. Um, and the intersections are expected to operate pretty much at the same level. They have the capacity. And we, the traffic's also gonna be moving differently. It's gonna be slowing down a lot more. It's gonna, the way the Form Based Code goes, the number of driveways on the, along the roadway might change. So it's gonna be functioning differently also, but the intersections do have the capacity for quite a bit of growth.
So the bump outs tend to narrow, narrow the feel and scope of driver's experience and thus slow them down. And that's actually a very intentional thing in this case. The roadways will be getting more narrow. That also tends to slow people down. Uh, and in addition to that, a lot of thought and conversation during the Form Based Code, um, discussions centered around the number of curb cuts. Um, Main Street has several properties, um, that have multiple curb cuts and that's total, that's not a good practice and not a good idea. Um, it creates too many opportunities for people to be coming in and out in different angles. Um, and there's actually items in there that support people sharing curb cuts as much as possible to create, um, common space opportunities in the back. So that's something we think is gonna really start to unfold and lessen some of that turnout traffic that we're seeing.
I guess I would just add also, it's, it's often a crystal ball exercise to say what traffic's gonna do in the next ten, twenty years. This moment in time is even more difficult with autonomous vehicles and Uber and Lyft and all of those dynamics that are, it's really hard to gauge. If you look back in time, traffic hasn't increased too much over the last ten years on Main Street. If you were to trend that out, you know, we're well, you've assumed much higher than that. It's hard to know, you know, once you get Uber and Lyft to cars that drive themselves in ten years, does that mean more cars, less cars?
I can, I can tell you where it's gonna be in ten years. As more people are gonna be moving to Milton and farther up eight and nine and like a country, not, a country Winuski to go to work, um, I think the volume of commuters is just gonna go up. So, you can't really reduce the throughput of the entire day. You know, we care about what Winuski looks like in the future, but there's a lot of Ramon's who just care about how fast they can get through to Winuski to get to their jobs.
And that, that's, you know, from a discussion standpoint during gateways and zoning, changing that perception that this is just a drive-through place on your way to someplace else is a major part of the aesthetic features and the idea behind this. Absolutely. The same thing on Allen Street. Um, and that, that's something that takes time to change and takes time to change people's perception that again, they can just fly through. I mean, you see it all the time, people regularly exceeding ten miles per hour, the speed limit, and still honking at people to go faster uh, because they're trying to get through from someplace to somewhere else. And that's where as a community, we have to also make a stand and say, you know what? Our pedestrian safety and our experience living here is more important than that person getting to Burlington in two minutes more quickly. Um, you know, during the crosswalk conversation, all my engineer friends can shut their ears because I didn't necessarily agree with the removal of the crosswalks. My quote was, I don't really care how long it takes somebody in Colchester to get to Burlington to work. Um, when it comes to the livability and vibrancy of our community, um, do I understand we're part of a broader regional transportation network? I do. Um, and we have to, we have to play in that sandbox and we benefit from it. Um, but at the same token, we need to prioritize the experience of, of what it's like living here for the people that we represent, so.
I don't agree. The traffic circle's actually been an improvement over the traffic light that was down there before the traffic circle existed. And the crosswalks that are there in place now are the sensible crosswalks, and that's been an improvement. But the volume of cars has just gone up and up and up, and you can't change the fact that we are at the corridor to get into, you know, the section of Burlington that's across from us.
Yeah, that's absolutely true. It's a reality we deal with. Yes?
And I have a question, but actually first I'll just say too, that maybe we can encourage people to move from Milton to here to get greater urban density on Main Street and have some, you know, bigger buildings, just like everybody moved down to the Rotary to a lot of the condos that are down there. Um, but my question is, when will we find out the results of this, would you expect? Will it be that evening, tomorrow evening?
We'll know at seven oh, because Carol's so amazing, I heard.
We have to hand count those ballots.
Oh, yeah.
Energy expectations.
But so.
Seven thirty? Seven thirty.
Really?
And you can actually come to the senior center as polls close and you can hear the count.
Okay.
Yeah. Sorry about that. I forgot they said to be hand counted. They're not machine printed.
I think a lot of us have social media too and will probably put out the results.
The positive thing is there's no write-ins on this one, though, so we're gonna have to count those. Yes, sir.
So is it safe to say this is a build it and it will come scenario?
Uh, I would actually say it's, they're coming, um, and we're experiencing that right now. Um, and that's, that's not really a mystery to us, and we're also involved. We have, um, I keep using a hundred, it's well over a hundred now. We have a hundred, a hundred plus net new units zoned for approval, um, in the city. So that, the results of Form Based Code are occurring. That's, that's coming to fruition as, as intended. Um, we're seeing that investment up there. Uh, do we think it will lower the barrier and increase, uh, some of those opportunities? We do. So, does that make sense? You know, you can see the two primary new developments on Main Street as, as examples of that. And Allen Street's another example coming out, not that we're addressing that area, but of the results of Form Based Code.
Yeah, well, one of the reasons I asked is you had mentioned that, uh, one of the projects had difficulties hooking up to utilities. Something had to scale back their project. Would it have made more sense for the city to pick up a tab on that as opposed to paying this?
That, that becomes a tricky thing because those costs can escalate fairly quickly. Um, and if it's not predictable to us, um, you know, we would essentially have to create like a super fund um, to address those types of things, because each project that, part of the issue is it's pretty patchwork up there um, in terms of any fixes that have been done, maybe were done one way one decade and then any fixes or additions that were done in another decade were done differently. So every time we open up the earth, it's a learning experience, um, and we find out what's underneath there. So it's, it's, number one, it's not predictable, and number two, from a funding, financing perspective, that would just mechanically be a little bit challenging, because we just have to set up a fund. And then how to apply that differently or how to apply that similar, in a similar vein to each development would be, would be a little challenging. You know, the one thing that we have talked about is in the future using, for example, we have a, we have a, a loan fund, um, for housing. Uh, we've talked, one of the Housing Commission goals is to talk about use of those funds. We have quarter million dollars that's sitting there that people could take out, different types of loans to do home improvements on. We've had conversations about whether you start to use some of that, those funds towards, um, lowering barriers for affordable housing development in the future. So those are the types of conversations we're gonna have about maybe investing some funds to get targeted outcomes. Uh, but to just pick up a tab from a specific development is, that can get, that can be complicated morally and technically. Does that make sense?
Can you talk a little bit more about, so if the project, um, happens and, you know, gets started in terms of affordable housing and just monitoring that? And what's, what are the next steps in sort of just tracking that and making sure that, that that's working?
Yeah, sure. So we do, what we did, um, two years ago is, uh, engaged a group to do a housing needs assessment. It was run by Moore Collins, who's the assistant, um, director at Vermont Housing, uh, Vermont Housing Finance Agency. And she used her grad students as, as the labor on it. Um, so they put together a housing needs assessment and gave us a number of recommendations for steps to take in regards to maintaining or growing affordability options in the city. Um, one of the keys was setting up a housing commission. We've stood up the housing commission. They've started doing their work. One of the, um, second, um, uh, primary outcomes was to start using a gentrification assessment tool uh, and putting together data on a regular basis to really measure, hey, new stuff's coming in, what's it mean to the mix? What's it mean to the percentages and what's coming in? Um, so Heather Carrington, um, is somebody that if you wanna do a deep dive on how that's working, we get gentrification, uh, reports, what, three times a year, I think. We haven't really set up a time. They've come twice so far.
July will be the next one.
July will be the next one, okay. Um, so we have those available on the site. And then the Housing Commission is working through a number of different policies, policy considerations. Um, you know, they're looking at things from inclusionary zoning to, um, if you displace it, you replace it policy, where if affordable housing's taken away, it's gotta, you've gotta have at least an equal amount. So all those types of policies are, are being considered by that group for recommendation that'll go to the Planning Commission. Planning Commission will digest and then pass back to, um, City Council.
And if I recall correctly, in the discussion we had before voting to move forward the special election for this fund, um, Councilor Mason raised some concerns that I agree with wholeheartedly, that we don't necessarily right now have the guardrails we need on when this act, when the development that will result in this project starts to actualize to protect our affordable housing stock, or at least, um, to protect against, you know, what could amount to be pre-rapid gentrification as a result of those changes. And so I think as a part of our vote to move this forward, we did also ask, um, that some of the goals that the Housing Commission as a commission have established to look at come, we, we get a concrete timeline of when and how they're going to be examining that work moving forward. So I think that's something the council is expecting, because we did wanna see something a little bit more concrete of, yes, we know this work needs to be done. Let's see the plan on how between us, the Planning Commission and the Housing Commission, we're actually gonna examine these and make sure to get those guardrails in place in an appropriate manner.
And if I can just pile on a little, I think the other thing the council's done is be very intentional about supporting active affordable housing projects coming into the city. Um, so, um, we have two sixty-eight. Um, so, um, we have two sixty-eight East Allen Street, which is, um, up beyond Hoods Crossing, um, is a true mixed-use housing, um, development that will include, um, I think it's about thirty-five, forty percent affordable housing units with market rate housing and house homelessness prevention units, which is a project the council supported with a letter of support that got the tax credits this cycle to, to have that project realized this year. So there's policy, there's data, um, tracking the data, and then there's actually supporting the live projects on the ground.
And I'll, I'll just say that from the early sketches of the Housing Commission work, one thing that they've already put in those, uh, principles is to be very data-driven. Um, and so there's a lot of, there's been a lot of bad policy decisions made off of people's perceptions um, and misperceptions and a lack of understanding of the actual information, um, in the past. And so, uh, there's a ton of data and information available on the Housing Commission site. If you've got, got some more and wanna take a deep dive on that, so.
But just to be clear, the form-based code does not have requirements for developing affordable housing. So there's an incentive program that if a developer wants to add an additional floor, they can do so if they offer affordable housing units or energy efficiency. So far, the units that have been developed have not, um, received the incentive based on the development of affordable housing units. So from my perspective, it's important that we get ahead of this curve sooner rather than later because the development that's happening, the incentive program does not seem to be doing what we had intended, which was to incentivize more development of affordable housing along the gateways so that we don't have pockets of affordable housing in other parts of the city, but not along the corridors.
Council, public questions, comments, concerns?
I just have a comment. Um, I'm a new city councillor and I take real seriously our mission statement. And that calls me to be fiscally responsible to the citizens. So if we have a yes vote tomorrow, I see that as a yellow light. But I think it's gonna, uh, cue us to go into some serious deliberation about approving the project. So, um, I think you can rest assured that we are gonna be looking out for the best interest of all of our citizens.
Anybody else? Any other questions from the public? Yes, no, or write-in? We look forward to seeing everybody at the polls tomorrow, uh, between seven at seven. Again, that's at one-two-three Barlow Street, which is the senior center that shares the parking lot also with, um, St. Stevens, uh, church there. So, thank you all for your time and coming, I appreciate it. Okay, we will turn back towards, uh, the city's, uh, the rest of the agenda.
Can we have a two-minute break?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So we'll resume at eight ten. Questions, concerns from council in regards to the agreement? Questions or, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I have one question here, so it says a ten percent match, split fifty-fifty. Wouldn't the ten percent need to vary eight eighty-eight?
Yep, so the, anything over the grant amount, the, there's gonna be a split between Burlington and Winuski. So, the construction cost is three twenty-eight five ninety, but there's also design engineering cost and construction inspection costs that, um, they're also tacked onto that. So, we do anticipate that over the grant amount, it's gonna be around twenty-one thousand dollars. Um, so, you know, fifty percent of that's around ten thousand, that's tacked on to that ten percent.
To the sixteen or eighteen or whatever?
Yep.
Okay, that makes sense. And this is just for the rail, not, it's not the whole bridge fix?
Correct, yeah, no, I, that would be nice.
It'll have several other zeros behind it. But, to that point, there is a group that has been put together, um, that is looking at the future of the bridge.
Correct, yes, so the next Public Works Commission, uh, there will be a presentation on replacement, which will also be presented to you all, I think, next month.
Is it June?
Yeah.
Right.
Yep, so RPC is leading that charge with, um, the design consultant.
And we just put somebody more active on that, uh, commission meeting. They had very quietly, um, so quiet that they didn't tell me, appointed me to serve on that committee, um, about a year ago, without informing me. So we now have an engineer who's going to be attending that, which is a much more qualified person. Because that's what I would've said anyway, we have much more, uh, qualified people than me, um, to have those conversations. So, look forward to bringing back an update from, uh, Planning Commission on that. Other questions, concerns from council? And for folks that didn't see it, Jonathan, last meeting did a great, uh, overall update on summer projects that people can expect to see around town. He, I think he's gonna be invited to be on a television show later this month too, where it comes to them anymore. Any other questions, concerns from the public? So seeing and hearing none, entertaining motion for approval of, uh, the award bridge rail repair project, um, contracts.
Second.
Motion by Eric, second by Hal, any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion carries. Item E, sticking with Jonathan, the water and sewer capacity reports.
Yes, so during the, I think the March nineteenth meeting, um, there was a request to get an updated capacity report for sewer and wastewater. So I, I can't take full credit because Angela, our accounting staff, put a lot, a lot of this work together, did a great job. So, what you, what I'm showing here is that basically on our water distribution side, we have roughly twenty-six percent of our allocation, um, remaining for capacity. And that, using some typical flows, that's, you know, roughly nine hundred and forty-two houses, just based on flow. So we've got pretty adequate capacity at this point. Um, on the sanitary sewer side, uh, very similar, we have roughly thirty-two percent of our treatment plant, um, process capacity left. Um, but that's just for flow, so just a caveat that, you know, if a brewery comes to town, that, that changes things because it's a high-strength waste. But, just looking at it with residential flows, that's, that's a pretty high, uh, you know, sixteen hundred houses potentially.
And just to, um, underline data that's before you, that includes the projects that are currently under permitting in the city. So that's not, so they're, they're in allocation, not in the remaining capacity.
And I think the important thing here is just as we look, we look at projects that could spur additional investment as we continue, continue to do that, that we, we don't wanna, you know, I hate to point, there's a neighbor in community I won't point out, right, that had to just totally hit the brakes and do, um, a moratorium on development because they lacked water wastewater capacity, which, you know, in fairness to everybody involved, is the responsibility of this body, working with you guys, to make sure we're looking far ahead, that we're not setting ourselves up to outpace our, our capacity and our capabilities on that front. And in the past, we've done a really good job as a city of staying ahead of that. And that's past generations of leadership. Um, you know, sometimes we say underfunded, um, underfunded, uh, capital improvement projects. But in fairness, they did a really, really great job in this front. Um, and in two thousand and twelve or thirteen, um, you know, we contributed a, a significant amount of funds to additional water capacity when a new, um, tank was put up on Water Tower Hill. So this, this is good news.
So I have a question about, given the fact that the development is not in single-family homes, it's in apartments? And how, what's the translation? Is it an apartment, is it same as a single-family home, or is it?
So, I mean, typically apartments, you're gonna have a, so a typical single family is like two hundred and ten gallons per day. A lot of these apartments, they're using high-efficiency, you know, fixtures and, right? So it's, you know, it's, it's a significantly lower amount. Um, but we can look at, you know, what kind of apartment, maybe frame this a little different and look at what, you know, for a typical, you know, gateway building, gateway structure building, how many developments does that equate to?
Yeah, that would be great, just to sort of help frame it in where we're actually likely to see, um, strain on the capacity.
Right, yep.
Thank you.
So again, not directly addressing that question, but one thing to point out on these lists of current allocations is the remaining allocation for the full pill, build-out of the TIF district. So when we think about building out Lot D or hotel project or other allocation that's gonna come out of the TIF, that's already being held in the allocation number. So, it's a very good point, we can absolutely translate that, but just, you know, that's, that's already accounted for.
In the TIF.
In the, in the current allocation assigned to the TIF.
Yeah, there, there is a hotel allocation in there already, yep.
Yeah, no, I'm mostly thinking of the, of the apartments, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, it, I mean, this, to look at, for example, the, the potential project next to CCV, you know, that's, that would take up five percent of capacity, uh, of remaining capacity left over, it's ten thousand some odd gallons, and you've got basically two hundred thousand. So it is, I guess it's something that will go very quickly. I mean, it's great to see that we have that percentage of capacity, but that's why we, uh, we're tasking a very capable minds to look ahead at those future infrastructure projects, ensuring we can meet that capacity going forward.
Is evaluating that part of, like, project permitting?
Yes, yep.
And same thing with the amount that somebody pays to hook up to the system. And that, so like Jonathan said, like, the difference between a residential unit and the, and there is actually state requirements for gallon per days for different types of businesses and the capacity they have to, to hook up to. So you can't have a restaurant, for example, which happened a few times in Winuski, where they got residential allotments to commercial buildings, um, which is, and they actually had some residential piping in a couple cases. Before everybody hears time, so, Carol. But that's, well, no, I was here too, yeah, uh, but the, yeah. But so the state stepped in in a couple cases and said, uh-uh, you have to up that and correct that and change the fees pretty significantly.
And Angela, we're here, she would tell me to tell you that the, that permitting process they go through where we assess the allocation and they give the, and they make their payment that that fund, that, those funds go into an account for system improvement and expansion. So it's not that those per, those funds are going into an account for the general fund.
Any questions, concerns? Thank you very much for putting this together. Questions or concerns from the public? Okay. So seeing and hearing none, thank you very much, we appreciate your time tonight, thank you. Uh, okay, skipping down, pass the public hearing notification to item F, discussion update on children and family programs, uh, budget. We're gonna wrap the evening up with a, a double-ray coffee.
Kirsty, well, Kirsty's gonna join me too, so. Yeah, and I waffled back and forth about which order to put these in, so I suspect these next two items will sort of flow together a little bit, but we'll, we'll get through it. So, um, on the agenda piece, wanted to give, um, a quick update on the Thrive budget and staffing situation. That was a request that had been put out, um, during the budget process, actually, as some of the changes were recommended at that point. Um, so wanted to just bring that back here and, and kind of field questions and let folks know where we're at. Um, so in terms of the, the current year budget, um, as of quarter three, um, end of quarter, we're performing kind of right on track. Um, we're anticipating at this point, ending the year right around break even, based on the quarter three, um, report that we have in our system here. Um, we always see, our program here is a little funny in that it doesn't quite track with the fiscal year, so we typically see, um, kind of bigger financial hits at the beginning and end of the year because summer is a more expensive program for us to run. Um, so we may see that shift a little bit, but I think we're tracking in a pretty comfortable space right now um, to be again, right around that projected break-even point, which is good. Um, certainly enrollment-wise, um, you know, some numbers here that I think certainly with summer, you see a trend that is concerning and that we've talked about a bit, Kirsty and I, um, looking at some ways to address. Um, I do think we're starting to see a rebound a little bit in early enrollment numbers, which is positive, um, for this coming summer season. But, um, you know, there, there've been a lot of changes in the summer program since I started. Um, and that's led to, I think, lower enrollments, but I think on the flip side of that, higher-quality programming. So, um, it's a trade-off that I think we've known was gonna have some impacts on. So it's a trade-off that I think we've known was going to have some impacts on, on program enrollment. We used to run Thrive Summer as a free, you know, basically throw your kid out the door at Landry Park, and again, would have in the order of a hundred kids there. But I'm not sure that that was always serving those kids the best that we could. So, um, you know, encouraged to see the rebound this year and after school. I think we talked a lot through the process of having interim folks in different positions that we intentionally kept that number pretty suppressed last year, and it was good, positive to see that rebound. We've seen more total families served, but I think in terms of daily enrollment, that number is still tracking a little bit lower than usual, for a host of reasons. One, I think we've had a more volatile population this year for, for reasons that are kind of out of our control. Families dealing with relocating, job changes that have led to changes in their subsidy levels, some families with financial issues who've had to discontinue a couple instances of behavioral issues that just kiddos weren't appropriate for the program we're offering. So that's one that I think in a given year, you can't predict that adequately. But, you know, again, I think total number of families served is kind of back on track with where we've traditionally been, which is good. And I was encouraged to see both vacation camps perform well this year for us. I think that was a good sign as well, that families are really viewing us as a childcare resource, which is good. The other piece too is staffing-wise, we have been down since, uh, staff since February. That's a tough time of year to hire into a school year position, and so we didn't have a lot of luck in, in casting in net. And so we have kind of decided at this point to hold pat until the end of the year. Kirsty's been in ratio a bunch, so that's limited some of the enrollment recruitment that we can do because of those hours being put into direct service. So.
Explain what in ratio means.
Yes, does everybody know what in ratio, oh, sorry. So we, we run a regulated, actually, stop, you tell them.
So we're, we're a state licensed childcare, which means that we're regulated by state childcare regulations, which is set by the Child Development Division. So within those regulations, we have requirements for a number of staff that we can have, ratio of children to staff, group sizes, so it's sort of a constant numbers game, on top of all the other health and safety regulations that we have to follow.
Only three stars?
Yes, we're an accredited program, which is accomplishments above and beyond licensing compliance, so we're currently a three-star program, which is the threshold for high-quality designation.
Can you guys just give the ninety seconds, just for those people at home, because we jumped right into Thrive?
Yeah.
Is it like, it means something to people and some people might not know?
Yeah, what is Thrive?
Yeah.
Yep, so Thrive, again, is our licensed, state-licensed childcare program that we run after school and during the summer months. So that's been running since well before my time here. When I started with the city about six years ago, that program was running out of the O'Brien Center. So just as a comparative, the first year I was here, I believe our after-school enrollment was twelve, because we had the challenge of getting kids from point A to point B with no consistent transportation, and we were doing a lot of vision questing across the community with, you know, six kindergartners in tow. So moving up to the school was a huge deal for us, and we saw our numbers just about triple in that first year. So that has been a great thing. And then summer as well, we, we base out of the school, and that's actually largely been due to our efforts to dovetail services with the, the summer school program that the school runs. So for many years, we ran a, essentially a competing summer camp program with the free school program, and sort of finally decided that we were competing for the same kiddos. So we now run, you know, if you look at our program brochure, we run a lot of half-day weeks, reason being that the school is running half-day programming in the morning, and then we pick up the ball in the afternoon and, and take kids to five-thirty. So that's one of the big pieces with the twenty-one C program and with the school that we've been trying to coordinate better and better, you know, year over year. So, yeah, thank you. Is that?
That's great. Any questions?
It's pretty close to ninety seconds too, actually.
That was awesome.
So, yeah, any questions on current year stuff? Before kind of jumping ahead to looking into our crystal ball a little bit?
So I, I guess the, the twenty-six from summer twenty-seventeen?
Yep.
As we transition, do we think that that's going to be a number that's?
Um, I think the short answer is no. I think we will rebound some. I don't think we're going to get back up to eighty to ninety kids.
Right.
I think we're seeing, we're seeing some different enrollment patterns in that program. I think there's a lot to that, but I think we will rebound closer to that forty-five or fifty number. And our ratios are going to allow us, we're going to run...
It'll be two classrooms, and our max group size is twenty-six per day.
Yep.
It'll probably be closer to twenty per day, just for health and safety reasons, but...
Yep. So that forty to fifty range is, I think, where we're expecting. I did, as I just said, we are going to actually run this summer two classrooms instead of three. I think that gets us closer to having a maximized ratio of staff to students. I think it's a manageable number, and again, I think it's, looking at our daily enrollment versus our total enrollment, it allows us to serve, I think, the number of families we've been seeing and keeping our daily numbers, you know, comfortably within ratio. That's one of the tricky parts of this, is that weekly enrollment and daily enrollment are two different beasts. So you've got to make sure on a given day that you don't have all those kids show up and then you're out of compliance and out of ratio, and of course, that's the day that the compliance visit happens and then you get, you know, slapped. But also, you, you take some risks and over-enroll at times because you know not every kid shows up on every day. So that's sort of the, I think the art of it is figuring out exactly what that looks like and making sure that you've got numbers that cover your bottom line, but also keep you within compliance and, and within health and safety standards, so. Yeah, it's not, unfortunately not a straight-line calculation. I wish it were, but. All right. Cool. Onto the, the future. And we can certainly bounce back if questions emerge. So looking ahead, you know, again, just sort of to reflect back to the budgeting process, at that time, the leadership proposal had proposed to bring additional portions of Kirsty's position back into the program budget and out of the general fund. So in years past, that had been a third in the general fund, or two-thirds in the general fund, a third in the program budget. With this fiscal year nineteen budget that was approved, it moved to a fifty-fifty split, so it shifted some of the burden of the, the position financially to the program budget that hadn't been there in years, there in years past. So that led to a deficit budget for the coming year, which we kind of all knew was going to be an outcome of that in the short term. So that's that nineteen thousand dollar number that was there, that was a number that was there during the budget process and that we, we sort of discussed at that point. On a positive note, with the extension of the Promise Communities Grant, we have been able to carry some of that grant funding into the next year, so that's about a little less than eight thousand bucks, so that will help bring that negative number less negative. So we're projecting at this point, with that known grant money, about an eleven thousand dollar deficit, which is actually a palatable one for us. It cuts about ten percent of our program reserves to cover that cost. We're carrying about a hundred thousand dollars at this point in Thrive revenues, sorry, reserves. So not a pattern that I think we want to carry on year over year over year, but I think to kind of kick the tires in year one, that's a palatable dip into the reserves to, to do that. So, I guess questions on, on that front? Certainly I mentioned here some other approaches that we're anticipating taking as we look ahead, but, you know, grant funding is as good as your grant approvals in getting, getting that funding awarded, so we will certainly be looking for that opportunity, but that's not, that's not hard money that we can guarantee. We are, I think, going to look a little more closely at our twenty-one C partnership, in particular, looking ahead to next summer, and what that could do for us in terms of maybe leveraging some grant funding there. That, that hasn't been part of our, how we've leveraged that funding traditionally, but I think there's some flexibility to look at that. So. And then, as I mentioned too, I think, you know, summer being a good example of trying to get ratios and staffing sizes down to a point where they're, we're really maximizing that enrollment number versus the number of staff we have onboard. And again, that's, we tend to err a little bit lower than maximizing ratio, because I think from a program quality perspective, if you've got two people and twenty-six kids in both classrooms, it's, it's pretty nuts on a given day. So I think trying to keep that number of students a little bit lower gives a better experience for the kids that we're serving. So.
And with Kirsty's upcoming, very exciting event that we're all very congratulatory of you towards, congratulations.
Yes.
Um, is, is that person selected for late July, or is that?
Nope, so we're in the process of getting interviews set up as we speak. So we've had a few candidates come through, a couple which looked pretty good, so we're going to keep, keep trolling the waters, but right now, we're, we're starting interviews. It's, I think, next week is the plan. Yeah.
Right.
So. Yeah, and I think, you know, again, that's a, that's an additional cost here that I mentioned about eighty-five hundred bucks that we, that's the price of doing business, right? I mean, we, we have a person who we value, who's going to be out on leave, and we feel like to stay in regulatory compliance, we need to backfill those hours in that role. So that's certainly money that we are, they're happy to spend. I do want to mention, and I didn't, I should have perhaps made this more clear in the memo, but one of the things that I did do as I was looking at that eighty-five hundred dollar number is carry that in our part-time salary budget that had been presented back in January. So as I looked over the last couple of years at our staffing levels for part-time staff in particular, we have typically come in below what our budgeted number was. So there was some, some wiggle room there that I felt pretty comfortable saying, we could absorb that eighty-five hundred dollars in the budgeting number that was already there without increasing that eleven thousand dollar deficit, if that makes sense. And again, I think summer is a great example, where we're going to have one less classroom of staff, so we're adjusting things, and I think we'll see dividends financially from doing so. So that's kind of the, the update from the world of Thrive. And I don't know if there are specific questions or other things folks would like some more details on, happy to answer what we can.
So you had mentioned before that the low enrollment could be in part resulting from short staffing.
Yep.
Are you expecting to see that again, then?
So that is meeting with the summer, reducing the summer staffing. So that, great question. So that was more to do with the fact that Kirsty's position has been acting in ratio, so when we say short staffing, it means that our director is in, in ratio working with kids. For the summer, we're going to staff classrooms ideally in such a way that the director is not required to be in ratio the entire time. What's been, what's been challenging is when Kirsty's, you know, in, in the trenches, playing Scrabble and doing the work with kids, those are hours that she's not able to be following up with families, connecting with school guidance counselors. So by having the part-time person not in ratio all the time this summer, we'll be able to have that flexibility again to start doing some of that work.
Okay.
And then also by having those folks, Kirsty and that person overlapping for hopefully, hopefully, a couple weeks. You know, a lot of the prep work for, for the fall will be done under Kirsty's watch while that new temp person is really sort of managing the ship for summer. So we've got some depth, additional depth with that part-time person coming on, you know, late June, early July, that'll give us a couple weeks of time to do some of that legwork. That's really often where we have our best luck recruiting new families, is through connections with the school and, and kind of getting into those partnership relationships with other service providers. That's a good question.
Was this three years ago? Kirsty's position was two, there was a summer thrive and a, a school thrive, for lack of better words. And the decision was made to combine those into the one full-time position, because it gave some additional strategic capacity, management capacity, and consistency of programming development, quality development, and that's, from all the feedback from the public, really paid off with Kirsty's hard work and the, the attaining of the additional star when it comes to the ratings of the program too, so.
I think that would have been really challenging under the previous setup, with two different directors, basically, for half and half of the year, so.
It was great to see that getting built back in to get that capacity for you to do all the things you do that aren't just opening salsa containers for kids and getting home on, uh, from playing Scrabble.
Cool.
Congratulations.
It's very exciting.
Additional questions for Rain Kirsty and the Thrive portion?
All right.
Any questions from the public in regards to the Thrive programming update? You know, one of the items we did is shift some of the Thrive responsibility to the general fund this year. In the past, it's been a self-sustaining fund, and in doing so, asked that we get some kind of regular check-ins on how it's going and how that's balancing, so we have a understanding if that's something that's likely to continue into the future, or if additional capacity might be needed there at the general fund. So I appreciate you guys keeping that thread and narrative open.
Yep.
And we'll look forward to another update, maybe.
Yeah, and I think we can talk about one in the future, that would be a good spot. But, yeah, we're always happy to come back and chat about it. Great.
Transition into part two.
All right. I don't know if you need to do your official transition to the next agenda item.
Oh, any other questions? Would you use to run these meetings? Any questions, if there is, from council? Additional questions for Christian Ray? Okay, so seeing and hearing none, we'll move on to tonight's last agenda item.
All right. So again, a program that Kirsty's been really intimately involved in, we've got a memo here for you all, just kind of giving a status update, which we had talked about coming back to do, namely in, in regards to the conversations around trying to get early childhood at the O'Brien Center, which has, you know, we've kept you, I think, pretty well in the loop as to progress there, or as our lack of progress, unfortunately. It's been a hard slog. I think there's been a lot of professionals and really dedicated folks around the table trying to make this happen. As mentioned in here, we did get information back from kind of the last operator, the childcare operator that we've been working with as a possibility, and at that point, felt pretty strongly that we needed, as a Promise Community effort at least, to take a step back from trying to land childcare at the O'Brien Center at this point. One thing I do want to reiterate, and I think it's mentioned in here, is that the, the group is by no means stepping away from that effort in entirety. I think it's just that we're feeling like, at this time, through this grant funding, trying to get childcare capacity, the center-based approach expanded at the O'Brien Center is just not working for us. And I think, given the pressures of the building budget and the need to see some, some things changed there, we just, we've kind of, I think, exhausted our ability to sit and wait for it to happen. It's disappointing. I think, as you can see here, there's a lot of challenges within the broader system that I think we are falling victim to. You know, my hope was that we'd be able to sort of spearhead some changes there, and unfortunately, I think we're, we're finding that the, the challenges are pretty pervasive, and we're, we're needing to take a step back from that at the moment, so.
So is it also fair to say it's not just the, the need to move forward, the building that's driving a change?
Yes.
But the grant period is ending, so if we want to try and make the best use of the grant, grant dollars we have, we have a window to?
December.
Right, we have a window to ask for reallocation rather than sitting and waiting and having the dollars simply run out.
Yeah, and so on that front, I'm going to let Kirsty share this update. We had a phone conversation today, we, Kirsty and the, and the two steering committee chairs had a conversation with the state today about that, so I don't know if you want to give just a quick update on the, sort of, the executive summary of that conversation with the state?
So at the time that we wrote our roadmap, which was, so the way this whole grant process worked, taking like a real step back, was that communities applied based on need. So you basically said, like, hey, we're a community with a lot of children and families, and we want to do some cool stuff, and the state said, cool, here's some money. And then from there, you were given, originally a year, we ended up with two years to create the plan of what that was going to be, so sort of backwards for a grant process. So at the time that we submitted our roadmap, which was the document, that was the culmination of two years of work on what we wanted to do for families, we had essentially two plans at OCC. One of them was early childhood, so that was the center we've been trying to pursue. The other one was more of what we were referring to as a hub model, which would be essentially a bunch of services all hosted in one space. So some things that we identified early on are that families are looking for places to meet with, social workers and caseworkers, to do visitations. Families are looking for ways to get in contact with WIC, and WIC is trying to host clinics with us, so some things like that. And the, there are other communities in the country that have had success doing these sort of family hubs where all of these services are co-located, and then you have one place in your community that you can go. So that was one item that we had in our roadmap, and so as childcare has made its own wants and desires known, we are refocusing our efforts on trying to do something under that umbrella at OCC. So the conversation that we had with the state this morning was essentially, if we come to you with a proposal for something less childcare-related and more hub model-related, is this something that you would even be willing to consider? And the answer was definitely yes. You know, we had essentially three things that we need to put out there very clearly, which was like rationale, timeline, and something else related to planning. So, you know, all things that we would put forward anyway. So I think we have a pretty clear path forward to at least present an idea to them, and it sounded like it would have a pretty good chance.
And that deadline too? And that deadline to the state is the twenty, twenty-eighth, I think?
Twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth, so the end of this month, essentially. So, our, our thought at this point would be to go to the state and say, here's, here's a plan, yes or no, and then to bring that plan back here to kind of present. I think what we didn't wanna do is bring something to you that hadn't been vetted through the funder yet, and then have it fall back to the funder and have him say, no, this isn't gonna work for us. So, um, there was definitely a lot of energy, um, in the group around kind of moving towards this approach. I think the partners at the table, namely the school and the family center, um, were both very excited about it. And again, we've had a lot of conversations over the last year, two years, with other service providers who are trying to get into the community. And I think as we've seen, Hal heard this a little bit at the commission meeting with the library, that space actually is becoming in some ways a de facto space where social workers are meeting, meeting with clients, supervised visitations are happening, and in that environment, that's not working great. Um, it's, it's not the most dignified way for those service providers to provide their services. Um, and it's not a great experience for other patrons, you know, it's uncomfortable. So I think it could provide some opportunities to bring further partnerships into the city, um, to better opportunities for, for little ones, which is the whole point of this, um, promised communities journey that we have been on, so. So, I think that's a little bit of the, the long and short of that. I think we're, again, we've continued to do a lot of work with the philanthropic community, um, namely Permanent Fund and Vermont Birth of Five. They're still squarely at the table, and again, I think we're not giving up on childcare in Winuski. It's just, given the timeline and the pressures of this project, it's just, now is not the right time. But there's definitely a, a commitment around the table to keep the ball rolling and try to figure out another opportunity in the future, so, which is exciting. So then obviously, the, the spillout into the O'Brien Center budget is, there's a short section here, but I think with, um, some of these other conversations getting a little bit more fleshed out over the coming month, um, you know, again, I expect we'll be back to you early June at the latest with some updates on what that will mean for the building budget and, and process, potentially. So, just wanna pause there for a minute before we kind of go into the other work of the grant.
So, does that mean you would present this new plan at the end of the month, and then like the grant's getting extended if they approve it?
Grant would not get extended, so we've still got until December to spend the grant money.
Okay.
Yep.
And then the intention then is, you're still looking to use the O'Brien Center, so it would
That's, that's the thinking at the moment.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
There was mention, I don't remember who said this, or even when. Someone recently mentioned about the library, like, bursting at the seams and potentially needing to move. Do you think part of it is this, this like secondary use that you're seeing? Like, if that moved over, then maybe the library stays as it is, and there's an additional area?
So, so the
So, Ray, so let me So, to Ray's credit, he is running, I don't know, A through F scenarios right now to try and find something that works at the OCC. So there are multiple different scenarios, and one of the challenges with having this conversation publicly is there are only so many, there's only certain things we can share about that. I will tell you, there is an interest in thinking about how the library and this hub would interact. Um, I think there's also a fear that this hub would, um, and I would say a fear from me, not from these guys, um, is that this library would create a new service delivery system that we have not to date discussed or staffed up or budgeted for or whatnot. So, is there an opportunity to co-locate the hub with the library? Um, and would there be, if we were to do that, is there a better use of the OCC space to accommodate both of those uses with staffing that could support both? Um, so that's, I don't know, scenario D that you're, that you're working out right now. We also have some private tenants who are interested in the spaces as well that we're in conversations with.
I would say like the, the whole hub situation, you know, you talk about WIC wanting to be involved. It makes sense to me to have it there based on, you know, you already have the, the doctor's office there and the dental that people are going there for, so it seems aligned.
Yeah, yeah, we, we tend to think so too. I mean, there's a lot of early childhood services in those different pockets that are happening in that building. So, having the ability to kind of bring that all together and have some glue to hold that would be appealing.
Well, not, not that this conversation's moved forward at this juncture, but in the visioning process regarding the potential relocation someday of City Hall and what a, a, a functional municipal facility that support, better supported the community would look like, having the space to conduct that type of work was pointed at as a major missing thing in the city, um, from a capacity standpoint. So we had talked about some flexible offices
Yep.
that service providers could come in, but sign out and use. And it sounds like this might create something close to that type of opportunity, which is, which is interesting from that perspective. Here's a question? Oh, I thought I saw a hand, I'm sorry. I'll pause though. Any other questions from the public? Okay. So for the repurposing, you think that's gonna be a quick turnaround in terms of their, okay.
Yep.
Has there been any conversation or coordination with neighboring communities? And do any of the other neighboring communities have this money? I know like Newport does, I know there's another rural community that has ran into the same set of obstacles that we're running into.
Yeah, none of the, um, communities in Chippina County were eligible for this grant, so we're the only ones in this area who haven't. We were actually accepted under like special conditions because our need was so high. And in terms of coordination with other communities, it's a little sticky because it is such a community-centered grant. There isn't a great interest in serving families outside of Winuski. So, a lot of the partners that we're engaging with, we're doing so with the idea that these are partners who serve Winuski families and often Winuski families have to go to Burlington to be served. And so we're trying to figure out how to bring them here instead. Um, that's sort of been the lens there. Um, but in terms of more regional solutions, this grant is not really geared towards that.
Okay.
So I have a question about the childcare. I mean, we are moving on, but then it sounds like there's still conversations happening. I'm wondering to what extent the strings that were attached with either the grant or the city's RFP around use of the space. I know that the RFP originally required a provider to serve Winuski families first. And I don't remember there was a, what the percentage requirements were. But there were some, some parameters that were focused on serving this population, which is different from, um, some of our neighboring communities. And so I'm wondering to what extent that was a barrier that you heard from providers? And, and then, and if the strings attached to the grant and/or where we were sort of pointing towards, um, if those conditions are eliminated, if we think conditions would be better for a different type of a
Yeah, no, it's, that's a great question. The, the piece that, so after the RFP was unsuccessful, one of the things that we did as a group was reach back out individually to a bunch of providers that, um, who didn't apply, basically, to kind of ask that question of what was it that kept you from being in the mix for this? We had some requirements around subsidy levels for, for families served, so the number of families receiving state subsidy, which were well above kind of industry norms. But in talking to all of, so we were requiring, I believe, forty percent with the RFP for subsidy families. And what we found in talking to providers is that twenty-five percent is kind of the sweet spot where, um, programs are still eligible to, uh, participate in the state meal program. But that number is not so low that it leaves them financially burned. One of the issues is that the reimbursement rates for the state are well below what's required for operators to operate. And that, that number hasn't changed since two thousand and ten, I think, the, the state subsidy rate. Um, it's, it's been a while, so it's not keeping up with the market costs. In talking to those providers, though, and saying, so if we move that requirement down to twenty-five percent, would your, would your, you know, name be in the hat? And, and I think the answer may be no. The big issue we heard again and again and again was staffing. It was recruitment and retention of quality staff. And I think as you saw from the provider kind of note in here, I think everybody just feeling a lot of pressure even in their current operations just to sustain what they've got. So, and I don't, I don't think the requirement to serve Winuski kids was a deal breaker. I mean, I think there's, there's ample, um, need in the community to fill slots. I don't think that's ever been what's kept providers away. It's really been that staffing model and how to make that work.
So I guess, I'm just wondering, what about it makes the permanent fund and Birth of Five think that not having it in this context would be possibly feasible down the road?
We're all really stubborn.
Right. But just, I'm, I'm not sure if this is what you're getting at, but the, this second plan, this family hub is not a childcare
No, I understand, I understand, but, but it's, but Ray sort of put on the table the prospects of we may not be able to achieve our goals through this grant opportunity, but there may be other opportunities down the road. What we've learned through this process is there's a need in this community for childcare. And it's disappointing that we're not able to do that, given the resources that are being put on the table to support that expansion.
Yep.
I was just trying to understand. Is it the strings that were attached to the grant that were a barrier? Or is it just a more systemic failure?
More systemic. Yeah, and, and again, I mean, I think your point is well taken that I, there's a point at which banging your head against a wall is probably a fruitless exercise, but I think again, to your earlier point, that the need is so pervasive and clear that I think the people around the table are pretty committed to trying to make something happen. And, um, there's a, there's a breaking point where that stops making sense. But, you know, I think the, the interest we're seeing from the philanthropic community and the partners that have remained around the table for this entire duration indicate to me that there's a will. It's just now, how do we find the way to, to make this work? It's just, it's gonna take some time and the, and the right fit. And maybe some of this new development, you know, as commercial space comes online, you know, in corridors, could be an interesting option. So, I think we're wanting to just stay in the mix and be thinking about opportunities and, and not, you know, fully moving it off the radar.
Yeah.
I do think there's some extent to which the timeline was operative since we only had until December. Um, and I, you know, I don't think saying to a provider, right now, you have another year, would've changed it. But I do think, generally speaking, if we have, if we can sit around and wait for opportunities a little bit more, then I think that changes the, the picture, as opposed to having this hard stop in December.
Yeah. We have been having this conversation for a long time. I mean, this process has been
It's been grueling and frustrated, and again, I think not reflective of the amount of hard work that's gone into it, which is what's so disappointing.
Right.
But, here we are.
Well, thank you.
Yeah. On a positive note, and I put this at the end intentionally, um, this grant has done some good work, and I, and I don't wanna lose sight of that. So I think, you know, this sort of final section here highlights some of the good things that have come to date from this. Some of them very much systems level, you know, providing some consistent coordinated training for professionals across different sectors, um, down to individual investments like buying a kid a bed who's been sleeping with their sibling and having a hard time getting to school and, and being engaged there. So, you know, I think we've really tried to look at deploying this funding at different levels of, um, intervention. And, you know, I think objectively going back through this list and seeing to date what we've accomplished, it does, it feels good. Like, these are things that are gonna make a difference for families and kids. In some cases, very immediately and very acutely, in some cases, you know, years down the road. But, um, it, it feels encouraging that there's some good work happening. It's tough that the main focus of the grant hasn't come to fruition. But, again, I don't wanna lose sight of the hard work and good work that's happened on the edges of that too. So, I wanted to make sure to include some of those details here for folks to see.
Appreciate that vertically-integrated approach, for lack of a better word, I'm trying to add.
Yep.
Tech it from everybody. Think you're right that just the coalescing around the table has been impressive in terms of ensuring there's a coordinated conversation going on between agencies, providers, cities, school on this topic of how we address this moving forward. It's been certainly from my, a huge visual win from what I can see. So that's, that's great.
So, the, the family hub model really reminds me of the one-stop center Department of Labor, you know, where it's a effective way, successful way to get people services. So, if you were to go forward and it's wildly successful, what happens after December?
Um, great question. So I think the, the plan for the grant funding at this point is to really create, if we were to go ahead with this approach, really to create the space for that work to happen and, and continue to work through Kirsty's position, my position, to sort of le, leverage the resources and partners that we have. We're not intending to use the grant funding to sort of staff up or, um, you know, kind of invest in those operating costs that are gonna come in year in and year out. I think it's really acknowledging that this is work that, again, is kind of happening in dark corners around the community and giving it some space to breathe. The hope is that we can continue to partner to leverage those, those other agencies, those other resources out there. And then I think look for creative opportunities in the future. I think suddenly you've got a space where you've got a little Petri dish for some cool work to be going on, some grant-funded projects, some pilots, you know, I think it becomes a really interesting space, um, to do some of that work. Which, again, we just, that space doesn't exist at the moment in the community, um, for, for those families, so. Yeah, so we, we're not looking to invest in any kind of ongoing costs through this grant. That's, that's not the hope.
But, but what I'm not clear about is what's the rent situation in the O'Brien Center? And how does that impact our
Yep.
we've got a
So, so this is some of
Financial report earlier.
Yeah, 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 so, yeah. So this is some of the modeling that we're doing now and looking at trying to bring a project forward that would have minimal to negligible impact on that budget. And that's what we're looking at right now, especially with existing partners who are in the building, a library space that is already paying its rent to ourselves. You know, we, looking at some ways that we may move those pieces around the board, um, in a, in a cost-neutral way. Yeah. So that's the, that's the exercise right now.
But I do think, Hal, to answer your question in a different way with Nicole's question in mind, that if we were wildly successful, one of the things we might be coming back to you with, or one of the things we may be coming back to you with in the next couple of weeks as we flesh out some of these models, is to what extent does the city wanna subsidize these opportunities for our community? And I think that that, that's a hard conversation groups of us have had over the last year or two. Um, but I think it's a reality if, if we're going to continue the O'Brien Community Center with that social, community-wide, um, value.
I have to do it. I have to, and you know, the sales pitch that we've gone off the rails for was always that it would be as, at least as close to fi, a financially sustainable enterprise as humanly possible, meaning that the revenues for the building would generally offset there and that the taxpayers wouldn't be subsidizing at least the building. So that's, that's something that was pitched to the taxpayers that we have now been honest about and saying that, not that anybody was ever dishonest about it, but there was definitely some ambitious, ambitious penciling that was done in its inception about what the potential revenues on rents looked like. Um, and as such, you know, we made the admission this year that it just isn't working. Have to integrate it back into the general fund. So each decision that's made now, um, going forward is not just, are we gonna borrow more from the reserves of the it's, it's a dollar-for-dollar impact to the tax rate conversation. So, if we make a decision to forego forty, fifty thousand dollars of revenue for, not that that's realistic revenue from any of those spaces right now, but that's, you know, then that's a direct tax impact now.
Yep, yep. And that's, again, I think part of we're really working to make sure that we're doing things cost-neutral compared to what we are doing now in the building is, is definitely at the center of that thinking.
That's why if you walk into Ray's office right now, you're very likely to hear him on the phone with a realtor.
That is true.
Yeah.
But, I mean, just to be clear, it can't be cost, I mean, we need to rev, we need to generate reven, revenue. I mean, right, so we've lost revenue
So compared to the Yes, compared to the budget that was presented back with April second, I think it was, that gets us, I think it's in twenty-twenty, fiscal year twenty, back into the black and starting to move the needle up.
Okay.
So when I say cost, it may not be immediately cost-neutral, but on that trajectory that we presented.
And I'll just throw out, we have, and, and just be really blunt about this, 'cause I, it, it does have to tie into this in some way, shape, or form. If we want additional decision-making programmatic capacity and leeway in the future, we need to have a larger conversation about that property. Um, and the, the property itself offers a lot of different opportunities and, um, potential. Um, and at some point, you gotta look at that and say, what else can we get for this to offset the cost of it? Um, 'cause it's not being, the land itself is not being utilized. And that was the discussion we had when we looked at moving City Hall there, uh, was how do we do that? And that's kind of the conversation that started with renting out the greenhouse, right, for the New Farms for New Americans. Is, are there community-oriented projects like that that could also create revenue while also providing a benefit to the community? That might be something that we have to take another stab at, yes.
And I would just say, these are great conversations to have on June second at our retreat.
Yes.
Yes.
It is nine oh four. Are you reading about people turning the pumpkins? I gotcha.
No, not for your pumpkin, just don't forget the June second date.
What's June second? What is that? I'm just, good grief, guys, come on. I didn't catch sarcasm this late either. Uh, other questions or concerns from the council for Ray or Kirsty? Uh, we kinda cut you guys off. Is there?
Nope, we're good.
We're, we're here to be done. Other questions, comments from the public? Okay. Uh, so seeing and hearing none, that completes tonight's, uh, formal agenda. I would entertain a motion for adjournment. Motion by Eric Secondman, if you have a discussion. Seeing and hearing none, all who is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion carries.